All right, the board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, present. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Laffey.
Here.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Here.
Alderwoman Howard.
Present.
Alderwoman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Here.
Alderwoman Peel.
Here.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderwoman Davis.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Alderwoman Walker.
Present.
Alderman McCorro.
Present.
Alderman Orion. Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Uh, present, and I'm gonna have to go out and come back in, Mr. President, something's wrong with my camera.
All right.
Alderman Grass. President Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Boyd, I'm sorry, Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Iggracia. Alderman Orion.
Here.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderman Grass. Twenty-five, present, you have corn.
Thank you so much, Sarita. Corn being present, we will now be led in prayer by Pastor John Watson of Maple Temple. Please take it away, Pastor Watson.
Gave us each of you, we're gonna ask you to lift your hearts to God this morning. We're gonna quote from the Holy Scriptures. He leaded me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Gracious God, heavenly Father, we first give thanks in this holiday season of Thanksgiving, remembering all the provisions of food, health, housing, financial resources, doors of opportunity, and many other good things that we have caused to be released in our lives. Today, mindful of our responsibilities as leader of the people, we bow before you, praying that we may be led in the right path, and our hearts receive the guidance of your good spirit during our deliberations. Allow your spirit to guide us so that we may be saved from false choices and be lifted to new heights of creative, of great creativity and courageous action. May we all, may we all, may we always remember to be wise steward of your gifts and use them for your glory to continue to move our great city forward. Finally, as this board break was seasoned, allow them and their families to experience rest and peace in their homes to refresh them for the days ahead. Into your arms, we commit ourselves, our community, our cities. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, this present board and its staff for allowing the public prayer to start its meeting. A special thanks to President Ballmer. As president, he permitted it to continue under his presidency. Thank you, President Ballmer. Also for Mary Lewis, uh, for her ongoing effort to coordinate it. Also from the board clerk, Honorable Terry Kennedy and staff for making sure everyone was contacted and put on the schedule. Uh, as, as it has been my observation that this board make com- complex and important decisions that affect all of our everyday lives in this community. So it has been my practice and now, now with my personal experience, uh, that prayer has guided the decision-making process in life, been trying to get the best outcome possible. Thank you again for this board for allowing me to continue under this present presidency. Thank you, President Ballmer.
Thank you, Pastor Watson. Uh, my, uh, fellow board members and to all the citizens of our beloved city. Uh, depending upon when this week's election results are certified, this may or may not be my last meeting as your president. So, uh, if I request your indulgence as I share a few thoughts. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude for your patience and understanding during my performance of duties in this most unique chapter in the history of our esteemed board. As a lifelong city resident and in my twentieth year of service on this board, I hope and pray the circumstances that propelled me into this position are never repeated. As I stated in my first meeting in this role, who we are, what we do, and how we do it, we're all put in jeopardy. As we are the grassroots low level of government, it is imperative that we learn to work together to rescue our city. If we truly understand the severity of the situation and truly are seeking a solution, then a joint and concerted effort is required, especially as we reduce our board by half over the next year. There should be only one goal, our city, not personal or political agendas. So as I, the seat I have been honored to hold transitions to the president-elect, and I guarantee there will be a peaceful transition of power. What I hope is that during this watershed moment, a realization of necessity occurs. The necessity being that our status quo is not working, a new level needs to be attained. And I look forward to reaching that level with you as I transition from board president and alderman back to being only a ward alderman, hopefully one of the next fourteen next year. So I thank you, and I especially thank the staff, my staff, Mr. Clerk and his staff for helping to make me look good during this very, very trying time. So God bless you all, God bless the city, and we will continue on with introduction of honored guests. Thank you. Alderman from twenty-fifth, uh, I meant pardon me, I'm introduction of honored guest, please raise your hand. Alderman from the nineteenth.
There we go.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized.
Mr. President and members of the board, uh, I didn't see a moment ago, but, uh, I'd like for us to recognize the passing of, uh, Martin Matthews, the former co-founder of Matthew Dickie's Boys and Girls Club, uh, who has served us and many youth, including mine and my nephews and everybody that I know for many, many years. So, thank you. We just transitioned.
Would you like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Dick?
Yes, please.
All right. Everyone, we'll take a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my special guest.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other hands? Any other hands? Seeing none physically or electronically, uh, we will move to, uh, there we are, Alderman from the fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to have Julia Allen as my honored guest today. And, uh, she's been very helpful, uh, in, uh, getting things done in the fourth ward. And I'd just like to give her the accolades at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome, welcome. Any further introduction of honored guest? Any further introduction? All right, seeing no hands raised. Approval of minutes, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you were recognized on the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve, uh, the meeting minutes for our Friday, November fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been, uh, moved by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, believe second by the Alderman from the ninth. That we approve the minutes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the mental health board. The appointment of Mr. Mario Hamel, the appointment of Mr. Ronald Griffin, the appointment of Ms. Lisa Mulligan, and the appointment of Ms. Andrea Blaylock. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
All right. Alderman twenty-fifth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, uh, uh, accepted these nominations to the my back?
You're back now, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I move that we adopt the, um, appointments to the mental health board by, uh, the mayor of the city of St. Louis.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twentieth, second by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we adopt the mayor's appointments to the mental health board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Cherokee Lamp Special Business District. The appointment of Mr. Richard Mark Farley. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
All right, Alderman from the ninth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I move that we accept the mayor's appointment to the Cherokee Lamp Special Business District.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Alderman from the ninth, reciprocated by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Cherokee Lamp Special Business District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, opposed? Thank you, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the six-twenty Market Community Improvement District and Transportation Development District. The reappointment of Mr. Gary Van Metrick, the reappointment of Mr. Matthew Krasinski, and the reappointment of Mr. Timothy Van Metrick. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones, Mayor.
All right, Alderman from the seventh, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the six-twenty market, Sid.
Second.
All right, uh, I didn't catch you give the second.
Alderwoman of the sixth.
Oh, the sixth, thank you very much. It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by the Alderman from the sixth, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the six-twenty Market Community Improvement District and Transportation Development District. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills or any resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Would Allen might take any bills or resolutions off the informal calendar? Alderman from the second, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like, um, four bills, ninety-four and ninety-five placed on the perfection calendar.
All right, Sarita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right. Alderman from the sixteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to request that Board Bill fifty-five be placed on the regular perfection calendar.
All right, Sarita, please make note of that change.
So noted.
All right. We'll go to first reading of board bills.
Board Bill one eighteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Walker, and ordinance repealing ordinance number seven-one-four-five-one, which approved a chapter ninety-nine redevelopment plan and a blighting study for forty-two-zero-one rear juror Dean redevelopment area. Board Bill one nineteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance repealing ordinance number six-zero-three-four-seven, approved April twentieth, nineteen eighty-seven, now known as section three-point-zero-six-point-zero-nine-zero of the revised code of the city of St. Louis, and enacted in lieu thereof a new ordinance relating to the same subject matter, amended section two of ordinance number six-one-zero-nine-zero, approved November twenty-second, nineteen eighty-eight, now known as section five-point-one-nine-point-zero-two-zero of the revised code of the city of St. Louis relating to aldermanic expenses and contain the severability clause. Board Bill one twenty, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment Authorizing, I'm sorry, appropriating a portion of funds received under the American Rescue Act of twenty-twenty-one, authorizing certain expenditure expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expand the funds to the extent received, contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
All right, thank you. Reference to committee.
To the neigh- neighborhood development committee, Board Bill one eighteen, to the personnel committee, Board Bill one nineteen, and to HUD's committee, Board Bill one twenty. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Thank you again. Second reading, a report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of the Transportation and Commerce Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one zero-seven, sponsored by Alderman Cone, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment Authorizing the direct and directing the directive airports and the control of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute on behalf of the city, the second amended and restated concession agreement with Tase, Inc., granting the non-exclusive right, license, and privilege to operate a food and beverage concession at the airport containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
All right, that we will dispense with line item fourteen, uh, perfection consent.
Board Bill seventy, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, and ordinance approving the redevelopment plan dated June third, twenty-twenty-two, for seventeen-zero-six through seventeen-twenty North King Highway Boulevard area. That's the extent of the calendar.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized for approval of the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we, uh, perfect or adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth, a second by the Alderman from the ninth, that we approve the perfection consent calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. By your vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the twenty-fifth and approve the perfection consent calendar. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one zero-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia, and ordinance recommended by the city of St. Louis Plan and Commission pertaining to signage plan overlay district establishing the St. Louis City SC Stadium Area Signage Plan Overlay District, providing definitions and findings pertaining district, further providing signage control regulations for said district and contain an emergency clause.
All right, Alderman from the sixth, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill one oh-five. Alderman from the sixth. Contact. Uh, there's no co-sponsor, no one to handle this. Alderman from the sixth, you're not with us. I see she's left. Should we table this, I believe, move on to the next with no sponsor? Uh, Alderman from the first, you have your hand raised?
Off or something. So I think that if we could just, can we go to something else so that we don't?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna table that and go, and if you reappears, we'll go back to that. So, Sarita, let's go to, uh, next on our list for perfection.
Board Bill one eleven, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment appropriate and portion of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one, authorizing certain expenditures of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contracts and other documents to expand the funds to the extent received, contain the severability clause and an emergency clause.
All right, Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill one-one-one.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt Board Bill one nineteen.
One-one-one.
I'm sorry, one-one-one.
All right. No worries. Entertain a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, second by the Alderman from the twenty-seventh, I believe.
Fourth.
Fourth, I apologize, getting your face is on my screen. You're on the next screen. I have a small pad here. So, uh, motion is second. Uh, Alderman, please proceed with your discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, in the full discussion that we've had in committee, uh, it is very obvious that these funds are needed for this community. I do believe that there is an agreement and understanding for the board members that, uh, we should move forward and most especially, uh, that, uh, these funds are going to definitely improve the quality of life for members of this, uh, city. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Any further discussion? See no hands raised? So Alderman from the nineteenth, you're welcome to close.
I renew my motion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's been moved to second, we perfect Board Bill one eleven. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Sarita.
Board Bill ninety-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement relating to the Lighthouse St. Louis Transportation Development District and containing the severability clause.
All right, Alderman from the second, you're recognized on perfection of Board Bill ninety-four. Alderman from the second. Where's everybody going? Uh,
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I, can you hear me?
We can hear you. You're recognized on perfection of Board Bill ninety-four.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to, um, move to perfect Board Bill ninety-four.
Entertain a second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the second. We have a second for the Alderman from the fourth. That we perfect Board Bill ninety-four. Uh, any discussion? Seeing no hands raised, Alderman from the second, you're welcome to discuss and close if you prefer.
Okay, um, Board Bill ninety-four is the project agreement Lighthouse, um, Transportation Development District. Um, this authorizes the city to enter into a project agreement with M-two development partners to reimburse allowable construction, um, costs incurred using revenue generated by incremental sales tax imposed within the TDD's boundary. Um, the TDD created a circuit court in February, was created by a circuit court in February twenty-eighteen, um, for the Lighthouse project. The sales tax collection, um, commenced July first, twenty-twenty-two. Um, and HUD's, and the HUD's committee passed four to one, and, um, this is a, this is a great, um, development project for the second ward and as far as for the, um, city of St. Louis. So, I close with that.
All right, we do have some hands raised during your discussion. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to request a roll call vote, please.
All right, Sarita, please make note of that. Alderman from the twenty-third, you're recognized.
Yeah, I'm just, well, I'm, I'm reading along. Um, and this is Board Bill ninety-six?
Ninety-four.
Okay, I'm sorry then.
All right.
Somehow I got this ninety-six.
We can't understand how that would ever happen with you, sir.
Well, because I'm reading papers and I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Don't worry.
Correction.
All right, you're fine, sir. Alderman from the first, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I kind of follow.
Alderman from the first, can you move your camera? All we're seeing is that the top of your head.
That's all you need to see. That's the best part of me. Okay, let me see if I
All right, there we go. Thank you.
There, is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Um, um, yes, um, if the Alderwoman from the second would yield the
Alderman from the second, will you yield the questions from the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes, I will.
All right, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, the questions I have, I was kind of watching this when I was ill and, and I was looking at the, uh, people who had questions, and so I just want to make sure I understand. This, uh, authorizes the project, but it has to go through some final approvals by the state, by the federal government, and if it doesn't get the final improvement, this doesn't happen. Is that right?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Okay, so, um, um, so this is just authorization but not the end results. So the end results will have to be based on people who have a lot more knowledge about, uh, the riverfront than, than I do. I know, I can't speak to other people, but more than myself. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
All right, thank you very much, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing no hands? Alderman from the second, you are recognized to close.
I renew my motion, thank you.
All right, it's been moved by the Alderman from the second, second by the Alderman from the fourth, that we perfect Board Bill ninety-four. All of them, uh, we have a request for a roll call. Sarita, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Aye. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderwoman Iggracia.
No.
Aye or nay?
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Yes.
Alderwoman Switzer.
No.
Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman McCorro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
All right.
Alderman Gunther.
Present.
Alderwoman Howard.
Already voted, no.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Eighteen, aye votes.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Alderman Stevens.
I apologize, changing my past to a present.
Eighteen, aye votes, five no votes, and five voted present.
All right, by your vote, we have carried the motion of the Alderman from the second, and for the Board Bill ninety-four. Uh, Board Bill, go ahead, please, please proceed, Sarita.
Board Bill ninety-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, and ordinance approving a petition to establish the Lighthouse St. Louis Community Improvement District, established, establishing the Lighthouse St. Louis CID as political subdivision of the state of Missouri, approving appointment of the initial board of directors and contain the severability and an emergency clause.
All right, Alderman from the second, you're recognized on the perfection of Board Bill ninety-five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I'm going to perfect Board Bill ninety-five.
Entertain a second.
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 Okay.
Previous rule.
Well, let's, let's proceed a little further first, sir. We have to discuss. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second to, uh, perfect Board Bill ninety-five. Uh, Alderman from the second, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Board Bill ninety-five
Thank you, Mr. President, Board Bill ninety-five creates the Lighthouse Community Improvement District is to, to construct, equip, and maintain various improvements within the CID and is funded by incremental sales tax and a special assessment only in the CID. The CID includes the entire Lighthouse Point project excluding the existing gas station, and this passed out of ways and means six to zero.
All right. Any further discussion, any, all over from the eighth, all over from the eighth, you have your hand up, please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, would the Alderwoman from the second yield for a question?
All over from the second, will you yield the questions to the all over from the eighth? She said, yes, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Thank you so much, Alderwoman Middlebrook, I appreciate how much, how much work you have put into this, this is a massive deal, so thank you, thank you for all of your work here. I, so I remember when we, when we went, where we were talking about Port Authority guideline or boundaries, maybe two sessions ago, we were talking about our special tax program within this state that they would sort of be able to recapture taxes within the Port Authority districts and then give those back to the city. Do you know, is this, and I, I am blank, I'm sorry, I'm blinking on the name of the program, if somebody has it, throw it in the chat, but do you know, is this the, do, was that a part of any of this discussion about being able to recapture those taxes and use those for our Port Authority districts here in the, in St. Louis? So, it wouldn't be the CID taxes, it would be sort of the extra, it's a specific district under the Port Authority, somebody who's dealt on transportation, help me out here, do you remember what I'm talking about?
I don't, um.
Okay. That, oh, Ames, maybe, that's, Alderwoman Gracia said maybe the Ames tax. It was, it's a special state program that I remember we tried to change the Port Authority boundaries for, I was just, I'm thinking, you know, because we've got the TDD on here that's going towards transportation development, so, and they, I know they talked about parking lots, I'm hoping that they're also going to talk about infrastructure, sort of getting in and outs to everything that they're going to develop up there and, and working to make sure that, you know, Riverview works for everybody and that type of thing, but this, oh yes, it advanced, was that advanced industrial manufacturing? Maybe that was it, is the advanced industrial manufacturing, that it's a state program that allows anything within our Port Authority boundaries to recapture some state taxes and put those back into sort of a city coffer that then we can allocate towards other projects, so I am sorry, I feel like I'm just rambling, I, there was a, it was a thought that came up about here's another way that we can benefit from a project within the Port Authority boundaries, and I thought specifically because this is a project within the Port Authority boundaries that maybe that would apply, but if, if that's not something that rings a bell, I could be incorrect about that.
Okay, I'm really not for sure.
Okay.
About that.
Okay, that's okay, I will, I'll ask some other questions, and I will, I will straighten out my brain, I'm sorry, I haven't had enough coffee this morning, thank you, Alderwoman.
Any further questions? No, all right. Any further discussion, all over from the first, you have your hand raised, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of, of the board, so I was out of the loop when all of this was going on, I was kind of watching it, but I can understand the Alderwoman from the eighth, because when you've been on anesthesia, when you come back out, nobody tells you that you don't have a sense of taste, a sense of smell, and you forget things, okay, I call it being loopy, but so I guess if the Alderwoman from the eighth would yield?
All over the eighth, will you, you yield the questions from Alderwoman from the first?
Sure. Okay, thank you, so I'm trying to understand, because I'm reading all this stuff, and I'm trying to understand what the great opposition was for, against this thing. I read some stuff about who says it can't work, but if it can't be done unless certain people who are higher than I know much more about the waterways than I agree to it. I don't understand the problem, and I, I do understand what the Black Alderman are upset about, because we don't get to do a lot of development, and in fact, even when I did development, I fought tiffs and taxing my own ward and took a beating for it for three years in a row, so I'm not a big tax abatement of tiff, and you don't see me doing a lot of that, but I'm just trying to understand what, I'm missing something, and it could be just because I've been out of the loop, and I'm just hoping you could make me understand or help me understand.
Sure, I can, I appreciated the opportunity to ask questions and provide some context in Transportation and Commerce Committee, but for me, and I, I think I can only speak for myself here, my biggest concern is our waterway, is the, the fact that this is right above the Chain of Rocks intake for our water plant, that this, the Chain of Rocks is a dangerous, what are they, a hazard, it's entitled a hazard on the, on the waterway. This is the con, you know, at the confluence of two of the largest water systems in, I think the largest water systems in North America, and it's, well, and then I looked up that boaters in Missouri only have to be fourteen to get a license, and that kind of terrifies me that there could, we could have fourteen-year-olds out on the water at, you know, dealing with, if, so if you go, if you go south from this point, you end up, you have to go kind of around the Chain of Rocks to try to get around that hazard to get down towards the riverfront, and then anywhere south of St. Louis, or you have to go back up north and then cut through the, the channel that the barges come through, that all that, that all that important commerce comes, I mean, like those barges are huge, and the way that, you know, billions of dollars of, of commercial development happens that comes down that, that waterway, and you know, we, we've seen with the low water levels what that does to, to sort of commerce through the entire country around this, so really, it's, it's about the environmental concerns of, there's also some endangered species, I think, that are around here, we've got some migratory bird patterns that are really, really significant through this area, they land through the Mississippi River and through this area when they're coming through to migrate every year, and then I I can't remember, a sturgeon, I think there's a sturgeon that breeds in this area as well, that, you know, you don't want to interrupt those, and then we've got the water intake plants that supply clean water to the entirety of St. Louis, and then one of the, I think some of the most compelling testimony to me was folks from the Mississippi River Cities. A, or, I don't know what the, the last letter is, but it's a coalition of, of cities and towns around, along the Mississippi River from, you know, all the way from Minnesota all the way on down to New Orleans, and their concerns were not that we can't develop, they said, like, we're not saying you can't develop anything on the river, it was now is the time at the front end of a project like this to get the types of assurances that the city needs to make sure that the project is careful, is safe, is not going to negatively, negatively impact both our environmental, like our water intake and our riverfront, as well as anyone further down river of us, right, so there were some serious questions on this project about and not, not the, the folks who are proposing this project, but the people who have previously owned the land, about when the land was built up and what the effects of building up that land have done to the area immediately south of there, and then further south, when we know that we've, we've lambasted the county and, and counties further north of us who are building up their levees and giving no care for the people that are down river of them, you know, when, when Cairo goes underwater, it's because we've, we've built these up in other places, so that, the land is already built, so it's not, that is a if that was done with permission, then fine, but it's a little shaky about whether that was done with permission, so that is done, but then what, what else happens on there, right, so we were asking questions about permeable surfaces that, you know, or swamp lands, that when the river does rise, are there areas for the water to go into, to, that can be absorbed? So, it's not sending more water down river, so we're not just delaying the, the problem further down river, and then sort of what, what types of assurances are in place to protect from chemical spills or boater, you know, the, the boating chemicals, or if somebody has an accident, I don't, if you remember, there was a, a sailboat that wrecked on the Chain of Rocks last year, and that was an experienced sailor, and they weren't able to, they had to go, the fire department had to go rescue him, and then the boat sank. So, it's, it's kind, it's all of that, right, and it's, it is understandably a, a part of our city that absolutely needs investment and development, it's just how, how do we deal with the largest river in North America and the consequences of dabbling with that river at the same time as we're, we're trying to build proactive and contributing development in our city, that's, that's really, I mean, like the Alderwoman said, there's not restaurants, there's not entertainment up there in that part of the city, and that, that all makes sense to me, it's the marina portion itself to me that is the biggest challenge here, and the, is why I can't vote yes.
Okay, so, my question is, since the Mississippi organization cities wants to get assurances, did they give a list of assurances they want, want to have, and were they all denied? Was there some compromise, or what happened with that?
No, so, they, I don't think that they were a part of the, the conversation in creating the project or creating these guidelines around it, they Colin Wellencamp, I believe is his name, from the project did weigh in at the committee meeting and sent a whole list of, here's the types of questions that the other mayors are asking about this project, and I think some of those were answered, I don't know if all of them were answered, and it's because the way that our structure is set up here at the Board of Aldermen, once this project leaves the Board of Aldermen, then it will be handed over to the Port Authority that will then make decisions about the next steps of the process, if I'm understanding correctly. So, this is potentially our last opportunity to weigh in as the elected body as representatives of our constituents before it goes to the Port Authority, so all of those, all of those federal agencies, the state agencies will all have to weigh in on the project before, before it's given any approvals, but this is the last point for us as, as city, city elected officials to weigh in on the project.
Okay, so again, so they gave at the committee hearing, they gave a bit, big list of concerns they had.
Yes.
But, okay, before that, there was no input at all, saying, hey, we see you are getting ready to do this, and so we have concerns from.
Well, that was one of my questions too, because we just hosted the River City, the Mississippi River Cities Conference here in St. Louis this, this year, and I asked if it was a topic of discussion, and it was apparently discussed at a sort of press conference at the beginning, but it wasn't, there wasn't like a meeting of the mayors to talk about this, or there wasn't, I don't know that there was specific outreach to this organization about this particular project, but I, that is besides what Mr. Wellencamp said at the committee meeting, I can't speak to the rest of that, so I don't know, the Alderwoman from the second may have had more of those conversations, developers may have, SLDC may have, I, I don't know, that's, that's the extent of my knowledge.
Okay, so you listed things about that you were concerned was environmental, the migratory birds, safety of the boaters, because you only have to be fourteen, of course, you could be nineteen and walk around the city of St. Louis with assault rifles, so comparatively, I'll take the boaters, who I think are more safe than assault rifles, okay? And talked about the water intake, did we go out there to find out if they had water intake, or do we know about that at all?
Well, no, so I'm referring to the, the Chain of Rocks intakes for our water plant.
Okay.
So, yeah, where those two towers are, are, are the main water intakes for us, and we had a, I was on Public Utilities a couple of years ago, and we went out for a tour out there, so I've seen those.
So, is, you're concerned that it will be blocked, or something?
It's, it's that, any contamination, right, it's because it's so close to that intake, any contamination there will affect our water intake so immediately, that is a concern for me, and also, those, those two towers out there are really enticing to try to get close to, because they're, they're cool, they're old, they're abandoned, they're really neat structures. I, I did paddle on the river one time, and that was like, oh, well, can we get close to that, right, I had the same impulse, and so, but to get to those from where this marina is proposed, you have to go through the Chain of Rocks hazard to get to them, and so that's, like, you're enticing people to, to get close, and so I just, my, I would love for us to also maybe figure out how we can protect those a little bit better, maybe we can enact, so I don't, I am not an expert in river law, and where our jurisdiction extends to, but it would be nice if we could put something in place that says, you know, this is entirely off limits, this is, you know, that we can try to protect that, because, I mean, our water supply is also a national security issue, and that's, that's something that lots of folks have, have raised as well, so that's, yeah.
I, I agree about our water supply, actually, when I was the Chair of Public Employees, I, and this is a little off the beaten path, but they paid the people who repaired our water lines so poorly that I got them ten and fifteen thousand dollar raises, because, you know, you're not paying the people enough, and they have to make sure that we can get fresh, clean water, so I understand that. My question would be, so wouldn't the Mississippi or, organization cities try to get to the Port Authority and the federal and state people with their concerns, since they know that's where it's going now, shouldn't you, don't you think they should take them to their concerns?
I, I would hope that they're a part of, they're a continuing part of the process, so it's, it, I don't think it's an either or, I think that they brought their concerns to us as the elected officials of the city, and I think that they will also be following this project very closely as it goes forward, so again, theirs was not a, don't do this, it was a, here are things to get in place as quickly as possible on the front end of projects that they have seen in their areas that they wish that they had gotten a hold of sooner.
And don't you think that the, if they do, what I'm saying, if they get to them and there are really valid concerns, don't you think that the federal, federal and state people, and even the Port Authority might address these at that level?
I mean, I hope so. I hope so, but it's, it's, it's our due diligence as, you know, in our role, right, to, to do what we can here for the roles that we were elected to, so, again, I, you know, there's, there's so, these are, this is such a complicated project, and I am, I am not trying to, to cast bad faith on anybody here, except for maybe the developers that told us that they had had some of these conversations a little more recently than they ended up admitting that they had, because those documents show that a number of those agencies hadn't been talked to since twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, and things have changed since then, we've had significant flooding since then, and, and, so to, so to have, I had, I did not hear the types of assurances that, that I was looking for in this type of a conversation, when we have these other big, complex development conversations, it feels like the, the plans are much more solidified, they're much more, you know, here's a, a walkthrough of what we're, what we're designing, what we've built, and it was, it was different in this case, and I don't know if that's just because of the nature of the, the type of project, but it, th- those assurances weren't given for something this massive, this transformative, we, and I, I appreciate the Chairman of Transportation and Commerce for having a couple of hearings to try to, to flesh some of this stuff out.
So, so what you are looking for is maybe updated information about this area, updated talks about this area, is that something that we, as a Board of Aldermen, could require every other year, every couple of years, even if there's no development plan, is that something we could be proactive about?
I think so, you know, I thi- I think that's absolutely something that we can request, I do believe that maybe that Alderwoman Schweitzer and Alderwoman Middlebrook have been having some conversations about potentially those types of assurances, and that may come in the, the third piece of this legislation this morning, but I I, I think that that should be a piece of this, is that we, you know, I, I've talked with other members of our body, I think it was with the Alderman from the third, about what a vital resource we have as we sit on the Mississippi River, and how when the rest of the country is dealing with water shortages, and we've seen our own low river levels, but, you know, western states are, are talking about trying to pipe water back to the western states from where we've got water now, and we, I think we as, as elected officials here in St. Louis that sit at the confluence of these rivers need to be much more proactive about protecting this precious resource, not just for our own constituents, but for the rest of the country, honestly, about how we handle, how we handle our water is going to affect lots and lots of people beyond just the residents of the city of St. Louis, and so, that's, I mean, that is, that is one of my biggest concerns here, and I would love to see us as a body as we go forward, be more engaged with the river, be more engaged with the floodplain, be more engaged with how this gets used, because it's, it's, it's really going to be a vital resource here in the next twenty to fifty years that we need to be as protective as possible about, so that doesn't mean no, no fun, right? I, I've always thought that, that we needed to be better engaged with our river, but there's got to be a safe way to do that, and that I would, I would love for us to have those ongoing conversations to make sure that we are getting those assurances.
And my last question is, did Mr. Kurt Scobie or anybody from the Water Department come, and did they have any objections to this development at all?
They did not come, I, I don't think, Alderwoman Middlebrook, I don't think, I'm not on Transportation and Commerce, I was, I was just watching those meetings alongside. I don't think they came, I do think there was an assurance from one of the members of the development team that they had spoken with Mr. Scobie, but I don't think we got anything from the Water Department directly.
So, I just think, and I've been, you know, I'm, I used to be the Chair many years ago of Public Utilities, I just think if they thought that there was going to be some kind of danger to the water or to the water intake, that it would be incumbent upon Mr. Scobie to come and say, hey, I don't think you should do this, or some concern should have been expressed, or put it in writing, even if you've not been addressed, I mean, or asked to come to the meeting, that you would proactively have to say something, okay, so. um um and I don't know if somebody else got something from them.
Yeah, could I clarify? I'm sorry, I got the um the site of the water towers. Um it they're actually before the Chain of Rocks. So if you get close to if you get close to those towers, you're north of the Chain of Rocks, but you're you're pretty much going to go straight into the rocks if you get close to the towers. So you're going to get sucked in there. So it's maybe even more of an enticement if you don't have to go through the Chain of Rocks to get to our water supply. So I
And this is an attractive nuisance. It's like a swim.
It is absolute, an attractive nuisance. Thank you, Lawyer Alderwoman. I appreciate that.
Okay, um, oh, excuse me. Oh, I cannot cough a laugh. Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have any more questions and thank you, Alderwoman.
All right, thank you very much. Alderwoman twelve, you were recognized. You have your hand up.
Uh yes, Mr. President. I would like to speak in part on the bill and respond in part to the uh the query posed by Alderwoman of the first.
Uh please proceed.
Thank you. I was trying to lower that hand there. Um first and foremost, I would like to absolutely agree with the Alderwoman of the first uh in that historic, the the North City um of of what was once a vital part of our city has been intentionally intentionally neglected by uh by various administrations and various boards and so on and so forth, spanning back decades. And I I think that decisions made decades ago can still have massive ramifications today. Uh I I mean, we see that with our current refuse challenges. We see that in other areas. Um however, my apprehension of this project to echo not only the Alderwoman of the eighth, but also some of my my other colleagues, noting that I can only speak for myself in my my little office of one, uh I agree that I I also have a question about the water aspect of it because it is the largest river in northern we actively have states on the west coast or in the western part of the country trying to purchase and pipe water from the Mississippi at various points along it. Um so that
Uh Alderwoman twelve, we we've lost you. Okay. Alderwoman twelve, we, I don't know if you can hear us, but we cannot hear you. You are frozen on our screen. I will uh proceed to the next hand raise and we'll get back to you when you uh become live. Alderwoman twentieth, please proceed. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um I actually uh had a couple of questions for the Alderwoman from the eighth, just to clarify uh a couple of things that were just noted.
All right, Alderwoman, we yield to questions from the Alderwoman from twentieth.
Sure.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um and Alderwoman, I have to admit, um you know, having watched just a handful of aspects of the last couple of hearings and 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 reading over the legislation and and not being as in tune, I I want to say first of all that I share the concerns of many of our colleagues um on the project. I think that the previous work building up the land had some real serious concerns. That was before many of us were even on the board um and involved in the process. And certainly, I think some of the um some of the reports of how that was conducted under administrations long, you know, before us, um but you know, was really questionable. Um and I think um it's impressive that we are really digging in. I think it's important to do that, especially when it comes to, as you've pointed out, as we've all, as several have pointed out, uh the largest river here um in North America, one of the most significant bodies of water, the watershed for half of our nation. Um and the importance of um our nation on it. Um something you mentioned um that was brought to the attention of the Board of Alderman by some of the um concerned citizen groups um and environmental groups was questions and concerns that other mayors uh in particular have been asking. Um Alderwoman, do you know if our mayor is asking those questions?
I don't, I don't know specifically. So Mr. Wellencamp did not list which specific mayors had um had given those questions. Um it sounded like it was mayors outside of St. Louis that were were trying to offer their expertise and their experience in having dealt with um developments along the riverfronts. But I I don't, he didn't list for sure.
Well, you know, I mean, I think it's important to recognize that we here are a legislative body um with very limited staff and you know, we are really in a position to approve these things, but we are not in a position to really drive this type of project as big as it is. And you know, I I think it really is important that we um develop trust in the, you know, departments of city government that really are charged with with that activity. And if we need a department or specific um uh experts within city government to kind of vet these. And I think that the the concerns that we've all brought out here do indicate that that's probably something we should be looking at as a community. I just I just want to point out that really, you know, the administrative branch of city government, S L D C, really should be vetting these in a way that we can um that we can um trust and 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 given that the 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 large amount of staff that they have, um you know, and if we don't have trust in those systems, that's certainly we, something we need to be discussing. But uh you know, I know for, you know, from the Alderwoman from the first, I kind of have to agree to some extent, you know, I I I I love and adore the river. Um you know, many of us, um you know, including Alderwoman from the sixth, spend a lot of time on the river um and have done a lot of research on this um topic, but none of us are experts. And so um I am hoping we can lean into our administration to kind of do the work that the other mayors that you mentioned um that have been mentioned are are doing with the staff that they have in those large uh bodies of government, uh much.
Must be something in the air today.
It is so, we say that, say that again, Mr. President.
We lost you for a moment there.
Oh, well, you know, I mean, um I I do share concerns and I I, you know, I I'm I'm not here to necessarily convince anybody, but I do want to uh you know, point out that uh we can lean into our administration to do some of that work and that we may need to do more work and have a more robust system of experts because of um our geographical location and the importance of the river, not just now, but moving forward in time. Um I think it's really exciting to see a project like this, particularly in North St. Louis. Um I I share concerns about the danger of the of of the Chain of Rocks. Um but you know, much like I want to see the um um the big fencing around my pool with the ugly, um I I can't even think of the name of that awful uh fencing along the top of the fencing taken down, um you know, because it is a precautionary measure. You know, um I I think we have to have some level of um you know, I don't want to see a a a large stop because of 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 what ifs, especially if we can educate our constituency. Um but hopefully we can use this as an opportunity to communicate uh with our mayor, what other mayors are doing um to protect our riverway.
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. President. That's all I have.
Much. All right, uh Alderwoman twelve, are you live again?
Uh I am, Mr. President.
Okay, I think, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Yes, and I I apologize, windy day. The wifi gets blown away, I guess. I don't know. But to continue um and more quickly, uh while I have everyone, you know, we do have a letter from the uh Missouri Confluence Water Keep, uh Water Keeper Organization raising an alarm about the uh potential for, as defined by the E uh the Environmental Protection Agency, significant amounts of pollutants like oil, gasoline, phosphates, copper, and ammonia, which are produced by good operation. Uh I would be more comfortable if we did have a statement or analysis from Director Scooby, uh Scobie, sorry, um from the Water Department. Um and ultimately, the framework in which I have to consider pieces of legislation like this, first and foremost, I always have to reflect in this role on where is my place in the twelfth ward's place in the city of St. Louis? Where is the city of St. Louis's place in the state of Missouri, the state of Missouri in the U S, so on and so forth? Um for something that is a project, a monumental project, that is a developed project that North City deserves, absolutely, because that our residents, our neighbors in North City should have access to the same amenities and the same development that we do in South City, absolutely. I'm in conflict with that desire and that want and that ability in this this role to support that with the understanding, or at least the the observation that this is the largest river in North America, and it is to some degree a matter of national, perhaps not security, but national direction. Again, there are cities along the are preparing for, say, uh climate migration from the coastal cities um central, you know. Um there are cities along the river that I believe, or as I understand, have had similar projects or other monumental projects along the river denied on this basis. Uh I'm apprehensive to rely on the public administrators in the federal government or in other agencies, be they state, local, or federal, because I don't control those. You know, they, they're not going to care what little old Alderman Stevens thinks in the twelfth ward of the city of St. Louis, but I can control this. And ultimately, uh I have to consider if this project goes in with greater clarity on the site specific and or with a uh without analysis from the Water Department, what is it going to mean, not only downriver, but what is it going to mean uh down the river of time? What is it going to be in ten, fifteen, twenty, forty years from now? What decisions are we making today? What receipts are we writing today that might be paid so much longer after we're uh out of office, the all of us? Um so that that is my apprehension. And again, I wanted to speak in part on the bill and and respond in part to the the Alderwoman of the first. These questions I quite appreciated. Um the questions she posed to the Alderwoman of the eighth. Uh and with that, and having reestablished my wifi connection, I uh I yield back, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman twelve. Alderwoman from the twenty-third, you are next on our hit parade.
Thank you. A couple quick comments. I was in those meetings and I sat through those meetings. And I trust that the Army Corps of Engineers and the federal government know more than we'll ever know. I don't think there's anything there that we can predict. I think that we keep talking about all the disenfranchised neighborhoods and all the disenfranchised people. And yet we're arguing about this. The levees already been raised there. It's not like they're going to go tear it down if we say tomorrow, go tear it down. It's already built up. This was a golf course. It was actually a country club. And we used to go to Chain Rocks for our school picnic. I see this as an opportunity. This meets the minority participation because I ask that this is jobs. It's jobs for not just white owners or white people. It's it it actually it meets minority participation. Black women. Uh uh all the different groups that fall under their that them categories. You know, these are jobs. And we can continue to keep talking about it. We can continue to watch all the gunshots in the city of St. Louis, and we can keep saying well, we need to provide jobs. That's that's the answer. You know, we're in the, talking about the most disenfranchised neighborhood. And if I remember from the meeting, uh Alderwoman Pam Boyd, when she was talking, said these are actually jobs that people can actually, that live in that community can actually walk to or take a bus to that actually live there. We could debate the river all day long. You can go up and down the river and go to New Orleans. Everybody's riverfronts developed. You know? And if there's issues with the development of the riverfront, if anybody here feels they know more than the Army Corps of Engineers, because this project won't happen if they don't approve it. If you don't th- this is only the beginning of a project. I look at this solely as an opportunity to provide jobs for people that need them. And that's why I'm voting yes on this, and I just want everybody to understand why. I am concerned about the riverfront, just like everybody else. It's already been built up there. So we can't talk about the watershed now. It's already done. But I do believe if there's issues with any marina that would be there, that the Army Corps of Engineers, federal government will stop it, just like uh Alderman from the twelve said. But the Board of Alderman is not we're we're not engineers, we're not you know, water specialists. This, I look at as strictly a opportunity to provide jobs in an area where people need jobs. And if we're gonna, we can talk the talk, we can keep saying we need to provide entertainment. Remind you, I am one of the few wards that put basketball in because we said we have to provide entertainment. We have to create jobs. So this is why I'm a yes on this. You know, and uh if if you're not, if you're, if you're not for creating jobs and you know, you think you know more than the Army Corps of Engineers, then you shouldn't vote against it. But since I don't know more than them and since I believe that we need to quit talking the talk and we need to walk the walk, we should vote in favor of this. And I am voting in favor because of those reasons. And if there's an issue with the water, people a whole lot smarter than me, and there's a whole lot of them out there, will either stop this project or let it proceed. And that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderwoman twenty-third. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh one of the things that we have not specifically said, this is only an opportunity to explore the process and make a determination with all those entities that are required to do inspections, to create the uh since we're creating the design and or saying yes or no to different elements of the project. This is not a final say so. This is an exploration process that will also be looked at by every entity, whether it is federal, state, local. Uh there, the list is, I I if I remember right, it's about twelve entities. It includes the Coast Guard. It includes so many entities and anything that is not re good for us, it will not happen. All of those agencies must weigh in. This is an exploration process. This is not a final go build. And if I remember right, and for those in the public, if you go back and look at those uh meetings that were held with transportation, uh even uh the developer said if they're, if they say it's a hazard to have a marina, we won't have one. It's a very simple thing. We are not the experts and this is not the final development plan, is not approved at this point. It is only an expiration process. And our water uh system is one of the best in the country. The leadership is extremely competent and capable of staying on top of this and making sure that there is no danger coming to us in any kind of way. So I feel very comfortable with all of those entities who are the experts. And you know, it's okay to have concerns. But we need to wait to see what the answers are. And people have been looking at this for a number of years as was indicated by the Alderwoman from the eighth ward. There's been a many meetings. I've attended a lot of those because of the exploration that people are looking at with the freightways and waterways of our uh area here. We were reluctant to approve our entire boundaries of the city of St. Louis for our riverfronts, uh which we would probably come back and do at a later date because it makes sense. Uh but everybody else is taking advantage of it. Look at St. Charles. St. Peters is looking at a project. I just saw um I want to say it's um up on the lakes up there. See the Osage or the Ozarks, another development going on. People know that there is um opportunity. We have chosen not to take advantage of any of that. And you know, the other good part about the investigation of this project is maybe we're doing something wrong already and nobody's looked at it recently. And so maybe we can even find some things that need to be cleaned up and or ended. I'm happy that all these agencies will be in here looking at this and making determinations on how this project can move forward and if the project can move forward or develop. And if the project can move forward for development, I shall vote yes for exploration. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Uh, Alderwoman from the seventeenth, you have your hand, Alderwoman from the fourteenth, your hand went down. Is that correct? All right. Alderwoman for the seventeenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Well, the alderwoman from the second, can you yield a question?
Over for the second, will you yield a question from the alderwoman from the seventeenth?
Yes, I will.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, alderwoman from the second, I was wondering, uh, what's the benefit for approving uh, this word, uh, this resolution now? Um, I feel that we might be putting the cart before the horse with a lot of unanswered questions.
I'm sorry, you wanna know what the benefit is for approving it?
Yeah.
Now, now. Now, okay. Um, this is a board bill. We're on the board bill, not the resolution. So are you talking about the resolution or the?
The red, the board bill.
Okay. So, I mean, our, the developers here are simply trying to get a start for this. Um, this has been going on for a long process, and it's time. Um, they're ready, we're ready. We finally have someone who has the funds, the money, the interest in this. So they're ready to start. So that's the reason why we're, we're doing this now. They're, they're ready, and we are ready.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the con- concerns I have, um, as expressed by the alder from the eighth and maybe some other people is I would like to see, um, some of these questions answered by, by the, the government. Um, by these different entities that will be looking at this project. Uh, whether it is a good project, um, I would like to have those answers, answers before uh, making this decision. Uh, the second thing I wanted to point out is, uh, I believe that, uh, and it has been brought up before regarding, uh, older people looking at legislation closely and having questions regarding that legislation. Uh, I believe that, uh, and it has been told regarding myself, we need to stay in our own lane. But at the same time, as a legislative legislator, um, I feel as an alderwoman, uh, that we should be able to ask questions and dig into research to make sure that we're comfortable with a piece of legislation or also to hold, um, ourselves uh, to be accountable. And so, um, I'm just trying to say that, um, it's important for us. Uh, even if we might be expertise at a subject matter, we may not be. And if we're not an ex- expert at a subject matter, we will be looking into that subject and research it to make sure that our questions are answered. And I just feel that this discourse regarding, um, uh, us as alder um, not being able to ask these questions, uh, is a disservice to the city. I know that SLDC is vetting these, vetting these developments and these processes. And at the same time, again, I'll just express that should not exclude the legislative branch from asking questions, doing research, and making sure that they're comfortable with a legislative piece or accountability. So, um, I give it, I, um, give it back to the, uh, president of the board.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman from the seventeenth. Uh, okay, seeing no further hands raised, Alderwoman from the eighth, you're recognized for the second time.
Thank you. I think this is actually the first time on this bill, but, oh wait, no, it's the second time. You're right. Um, I, so I guess my, one of the questions that I, I didn't get clarity on that I am kind of confused about here. And I, I'm not on the HUD's committee. I think I asked to be on the HUD's committee. That didn't ever happen. But, um, so this is so my expertise is limited here. Um, but the, I am concerned that we're calling this an exploration, um, when we're, we're talking about giving, so we're establishing a SED, we're establishing the TDD, and we're asking for incentives on these three separate bills here, um, for something that we, we don't know is going to happen. And I, my recollection of, so the one that's coming to mind at the moment is the, the target project on grant. Um, when we, when we authorized a SED there, when we authorized, um, incentives there, we knew the target was a tenant. We knew how many units were going to be built, at what cost, at what, um, leasing price that they were going to be going up. We had an, you know, agreement on affordable housing, like all of that was fleshed out. And I don't, I don't recall another project that had such a major component of we don't know if this is going to happen, um, that, that we're doing all of this with a giant question mark of whether or not this is even feasible. And so, I, I guess, um, with the, with the alderwoman from the second, yield again for a question.
Over for the second, will you yield the questions from the alderwoman from the eighth?
Yes, I will.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, Alderwoman, I guess, could, could you help me understa- like, was there, I think we asked this in committee, and I, I don't recall a clear enough answer. Do, do we know from the development group if the marina itself is not feasible to go forward, or if they don't get the right permissions from Army Corps, that type of thing? Will the rest of this development still go forward?
So from what I understand, yes, it will.
Okay, so okay, that's, that is helpful. I mean, that, that's really good to know, because then, I mean, we're, I don't think any of the rest of us have concerns about all of the rest of the, the development. It's really this marina piece, but it was because the marina was part of phase one, um, as they, they talked about that, um, that it was still up in the air. So do you know if that, if the marina weren't to go, I guess, I guess this is where, this is probably a more of a question for the resolution, um, but that that's why we're authorizing up to a certain amount of incentive, um, because we don't know if this particular piece is going to go forward?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that is helpful. Um, I think that answers, that answers a, a lot of my question. I just, um, yeah, I ju- I really just can't recall such a, a big project with, with such a huge piece of it still up in the air. Um, thank you. Uh, that's the rest of my questions.
All right. Uh, Alderwoman from the first, you have your hand raised. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, if the alderwoman from the second would yield to one question?
All right. Over for the second, we yield two questions from the alderwoman from the first.
Yes.
What size, thank you, Mr. President. What size is the, uh, project? You know, said how large it was, I mean.
Oh, let me get that information out. Um, what I can tell you is that, um, it's gonna be, it's eighty, uh, eighty thousand square foot indoor water park. Um, thirty-five thousand for a conference room, thirty thousand for retail space.
Okay.
Um, a two hundred slip marina. And I think it's, um, that would pretty much cover everything that, that is gonna be there.
Okay.
Along with the hotel with three hundred and seventy-five rooms.
All right. Thank you. I wanna say to the alderwoman from the eighth, um, years ago, when I got in office, we started a thirty acre shopping center at Union and Natural Bridge. We got a new mayor who bothered us and messed with it. So we ended up not getting the thirty acres. We got ten acre grocery store. That, that's the one I got beat up for, for not getting TIF. Uh, and not giving them TIF for a ten acre grocery store. And they just moved five, five blocks down the street. But we did put that whole project together. We put blighted the project. It was for future development. And that is some of the things that they're supposed to be doing over there at the alphabet places. Sometimes you're getting this all together, uh, and I always do this little shout out to Vince, because I was a brand new alderperson and Mayor Shamel uh, spent four million dollars and bought the lot so that we could have the lot. And then we went about doing, um, blighting um, so that we could have, uh, property to do the next prop, uh, part of the project and the next part. They didn't get done, because they were in a different ward, and that alderman said, oh, we were, uh, gentrifying that ward, and he didn't want it. But now it's in my ward, and I've been working for a couple of years. It's kind of stalled with this mayor, because we don't have a hardware in North St. Louis. But the whole point is that we do do projects like that. I watched it downtown. You guys weren't here, but I was. I watched them put all kind of money for future development in downtown. So this doesn't seem like a lot to me. Pretty much, you'd have to come something that costs like about twenty billion dollars or something for it to seem uh, a lot to me, because even when we knew downtown that the, uh, Convention Center Hotel was gonna go under, they still used, uh, 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 money that should have been used in North St. Louis, and it went under, and then we had to commit to something else. So, uh, when I came down, down, down to the board, downtown was a future thought. It was not all of this that you see here. It had a few little apartments and things like that, but they did all kind of things. Ten million dollars in the Street of Washington, um, which we don't use anymore for cable. So we just, we have, uh, had, um, I call it wishful thinking about development, and look what it's taught, uh, what it's done. We don't do it in North St. Louis. Um, when I pushed it, we were gonna get a Snooks. Everybody said, oh, you can't get a Snooks. And we got it. And a new go, oh, what you gonna get off? Walgreens? You can't have it. You can't have a new school. We did fifty something million dollars before I was, uh, gerrymander. It can be done. You have to have somebody with, uh, belief and, um, and, and vision. And so I still don't believe that Mr. Kurt Scobie, if he really thought that there was gonna be something wrong, uh, hurt our water, that he wouldn't maybe even come to a committee meeting, but he would tell some alderperson. When you've been around for a long time, sometime people tell you stuff that they don't maybe tell the committee, because they don't wanna get in trouble. I think somebody in his office would say something if he really thought it was gonna be a problem. So, um, kinda, uh, and, and I don't think that all the bureaucrats would necessarily do everything right, but that's their job. And right now, I can't do their job to say they're right or wrong. So I'm gonna have to, uh, kind of rely on them. I still think that the people who think there should be more things put in place should continue to work on submitting that to the next step, you know, to the Port Authority, to the federal and state, even tell, letting us know, hey, we submitted this. And so we're still concerned about this. But it's not enough that I'm going to not, I'm going to support this, because we have so little development in North St. Louis, and people hold it up. This, 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 this mayor's office right here, it was okayed under the Crusoe administration. We were doing better under the Crusoe administration. You're holding up a hardware store. Why? We have, don't have one in North St. Louis. I remember when the one on South Kings Island was built. I beat it over there to go there because Geraldine Osborne and Martya Lucy, that's how far back it was, helped get it there. So, um, uh, Northside Aldermen don't have the luxury of, of being so hard on things. And by the same token, I do admit you don't have the luxury to messing up your water supply either. So I give both sides of it. But right now, I don't feel threatened that this is gonna go forward if that really is, um, concerns, um, that need to be addressed. So I am going to support this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-eighth, you have your hand raised. Please proceed.
Yeah, I just, uh, I wanted to, one thing, just bring up quickly. I know, uh, we're, we went to talking about the water supply a little bit, uh, in the committee, in the transportation committee. I do think that it was SLDC that reported back that they talked to the water department. The water department indicated they didn't have any concerns, uh, not a member of the development team, if that, that matters. Um, and, and you know, and I'd agree that, you know, you could say, well, how, how much is the permitting gonna do for the permitting process gonna do for some of these other concerns? But, you know, I feel like for a safe water supply issue, I think that, you know, we should definitely be able to trust, uh, regulatory issues on, um, something like that. Um, I will say, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the alderwoman from the seventeenth, that, uh, as alderpeople, we should, you know, research bills and ask questions. And I think that's one of the, you know, things I, I enjoy about this position, about our role here, uh, is to, to be able to learn a lot about things. You know, I, I'm a, uh, litigator, used to do a lot of complicated medical malpractice cases, and, and I never shied away from, you know, getting a medical textbook out, really trying to learn the medicine and, 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 and make myself informed with these decisions. And you know, this has now been going on for several weeks since our first meeting. Um, and, you know, I did do things that I do to make myself informed on topics and sort of talk to people who I thought knew about topics, because I've read things and you know, really everything I'm kind of, um, you know, seeing, um, is that this is, uh, a good project and that it has potential upsides and that, you know, some of the concerns, you know, these, there are marinas all over the world that are next to, um, areas where you're not supposed to go. And, you know, these are, th- this is accounted for, and um, so, you know, and, and I think that that's just what, you know, I, I, I think that all decisions we make, we weigh pros and cons. We look at the benefits, we look at the drawbacks. And, um, I think that there there is a lot of talk on, you know, concerns about this bill and, and potential problems. Um, but I do think that there's also potential upside, and I think the potential upside on this project is, is extremely large. Um, you know, besides just the size of the project itself, we have three hundred and twenty something million, you know, during the, um, testimony, you know, we heard that SLDC didn't even include, well, not didn't even include, like, it's a bad thing, but like, what's not included as, you know, ancillary jobs, like charter boat captains, that sort of thing, that'll pop up. Um, I, I think that, and it's just a key, you know, there's nothing, we don't have anything like this in, um, you know, anywhere near here. So it's not gonna cannibalize anything else, and especially not, you know, um, in, in North St. Louis. So uh, I, I think weighing, you know, the concerns, I think, seem to be procedural. I think that, you know, that, well, you know, we have and got answers to our questions. I, you know, I've not really seen people going out trying to find answers to any questions, um, that, uh, there. So you know, compare that to all the, the potential upside we're dealing with here. Um, I, I'm, I mean, yes, I just wanted to say that.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you have re-raised your hand. Please proceed.
I have. Uh, may I ask the alderwoman from the second a question?
Alderwoman from the second, will you yield to the alderwoman from the fourteen?
Yes.
Please proceed.
First off, um, alderwoman, I am not opposed to development in your ward or any other ward. I'm always very pro-development. Whatever brings money into our city is good for our city. I guess my, my question is, has the board, has the Corps of Engineers approve this, or is this just preliminary and they have to weigh in later?
This is preliminary and they will weigh in later.
So basically, we're approving this, and then, you know, all of those people that deal with what goes on in the waterways, Corps of Engineers, environmental, all of those kind of things will come after?
Yes.
And I, one more question. And so approving this, excuse my puppy, uh, approving this allows them to say they have this as part of their financing package, I guess?
Yes, that's what I have been told.
Okay.
They, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I still am concerned about the environment with this and, and what impact it will have and, uh, you know, the migratory birds and all of the, the ecosystem up there. But I think maybe listening to the testimony, I can go ahead and give this approval, and hopefully uh, due diligence will take place, and whatever's good, uh, for the area will, will come through. I do think we need to use our, utilize our river more. Uh, we have a gem, you know, flowing through our city that we just sort of shut the door on. Uh, and when I look at other cities, you know, Baltimore, other cities that are on waterways, they have some attractions there. Maybe this isn't our opportunity. And I appreciate your time with this, and, um, I think I will, will vote for it now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion, any further discussion? Seeing no hands raised, Alderwoman from the second, you are welcomed and recognized, applause.
Thank you. I renew my motion.
All right. We have a motion, a second, to perfect Board Bill ninety-five. Uh, all of the favor signify, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Most?
Aye.
No?
No.
So, all right. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Sureita.
Board Bill fifty-five, sponsored by Alderman Altenberg, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Ryan, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Velcaro, and Alderwoman Green. In order to amend City of St. Louis Revives Code Chapters, four point one eight zero five five, four point one eight two two five, four point one eight, point three one five, four point one nine point one two zero, four point one nine point one three zero, four point one nine point one four zero, and four point one nine point one seven zero, so as to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as the Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan, but not until such time as amendments to Missouri Rev- But not until such time as amendments to Missouri Revives Statutes, eight seven point one four zero, eight seven point one four five, eight seven point one five five, eight seven point two six zero and eight seven point three five zero have become law to permit the Board of Trustees of the Fireman's Retirement System to simultaneously act as Board of Trustees of the St. Louis Firefighters Retirement Plan and contain an an effective date.
All right. Alderman from the sixteenth, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill fifty five.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the sixteenth, the second from the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we perfect Board Bill fifty five. Any discussion, any discussion? All right, uh before you proceed, Alderman from the sixteenth, we'll uh let's Alderman from the thirteenth has her hand raised. Please proceed.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. This bill has been one that we've talked about a lot. I think most of us have met with either the sponsor on this or the firefighters or the budget division and listened to all the meetings. And I think what it really trickles down to at the end of the day is that uh there is a distinct lack of trust between um the seems like the budget division and the firefighters union on this bill. Um and I think that it ha- that kind of um is shown by both sides having presentations that are uh convincing um in that and not being able to necessarily find a middle ground on this bill. Um and um it it's dates back to all the, you know, de- uh a decade, I guess, and in terms of that trust happening. And I think for Alders, it's been really tough because I have a great amount of trust for the firefighters and a great amount of trust for the budget division. So it's been one that I've really struggled on. Um and I will be voting yes on this today. Uh and I appreciate all the time everyone's taken to to help me figure out where I should be on this. Um and I hope that that yes vote can be seen as a as um hopefully moving forward in coming together on what has been a very difficult uh process for both city employees and uh with the within the fire department and uh with the budget division. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the twenty fifth, you have your hand raised. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I uh I just have to, you know, state, you know, this is not just merely an issue of trust between the budget division and the firefighters union. I apologize. I've got people. So, uh you know, this is uh also a matter of, you know, the the city, its resources, you know, and being fiscally responsible with, you know, how we're managing this and also being familiar with pension systems, how they operate. Um you know, we're essentially, you know, in a position where we've created two new pension or a new pension system. We're dealing with two pension systems. And we're at a place where we're now reverting back to the old pension management system. Uh you know, in in terms of how we move forward, that F R P plan is going to be losing members is um you know, people uh retire and end up in, you know, end of life care and whatnot. Um you know, so we're now reverting back to uh the new system using the old systems management practices. It it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. Um so I I have to, you know, strongly disagree. This isn't just about trust. It's about, you know, just being simply practical with how we're managing our resources and how we're administering these uh pension systems. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um I I want to echo the, excuse me, the concerns of the Alderman from the twenty fifth. Um and I I've also met uh with folks on this. I've talked with um both folks from the administration and uh from the retirement board and from our firefighters union. And it it seems to me that there, there's a lot, there's a lot more going on here. And I think that we owe it to our firefighters to have a conversation um and have have a real commitment to looking at the benefits that they are that they are dealing with um and the ways that uh their benefit package changed and how we for us. Um but this change does not do that. Um this change is not about benefits. It is only about management of the um of the pension funds and the way the new pension system that was set up for the firefighters under the last change um gave them the exact same representation at um of on their pension as every other city employee has on the employee retirement system. Um the makeup of administration officials, current employees, retired employees um is the exact same as all of our other city employees have. Um there's no, there is no um discrimination against the firefighters in that they're they're equally, um they're equally represented the way that the rest of our city employees are. Um and so if there is, I, you know, and I agree with the Alderman from the twenty fifth that as as the old system winds down, as more members are moving out of that system, um we should be shoring up and and working towards improving the new system that was put in place so that it takes care of folks. Um and if there if there's an amendment to um I, you know, I could support a simple amendment that takes care of the the problem that came through the last legislation um that impacted widows. Um that is something we should absolutely take up. Um but the rest of this is not something that I can support. Um because I I think that we, I think the change was made for a reason. I think that we've seen positive outcomes from that change. Um and I think that it is fair to have our have our firefighters be represented in their pension system the same way the rest of city employees are. Um so thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Any further discussion? Uh Alderman from the first, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um so this has been a long winding road uh regarding this this particular board deal. Um and I have not been a supporter of it. And the Alderwoman from the eighth and the twenty, Alderman from the twenty fifth have already said some of the reasons. Um I did offer, when I didn't support it, that we should repair, not only for the widows, but there are some actual firefighters that got caught up in some things. And we I offered and said, why don't we just fix the people who actually had damage and let this work? And so uh members of the firefighters, they said they were gonna give me some information that would change my mind. Um I'm gonna take the blame. Since I was sick, I wasn't available, but I still want to see that information. I'm gonna be a present because right now my other vote would be a no. And I'm gonna call uh Mr. Alfred and ask him to please bring me that information that would change my mind. Because when I talk to other unions and other employees of the city, they say that this board bill would hurt them um and be unfair. And I don't want to be unfair to the rest of the people. Also, um the firefighters have been much like the police in their cry to get out of the city of St. Louis. That has always uh uh kinda disturbed me. And I tell the police and the firefighters, that really hurts my feelings that you want to get all of this money from the community and then you want to find a way to beat your path out of here. And if you were somebody saying, hey, I want to stay here and I want to fight the battle and I want to, whatever it is, I want to stay here and make it better. But um they go up to Jefferson City as often as possible to go around our legislation. And when people do that uh and round our charter, anything else, that uh concerns me. So um for the reasons that the Alderman from the twenty fifth stated, the Alderwoman from the eighth stated, and then just my own concerns to watch them over the years. Um not want to be a team player with the city of St. Louis. Um when you are, and I've been married thirty four years, good and bad, you know, if you're gonna stay married, you go through those things. You compromise, you work together. You don't say, oh, your house is falling down. Let me get out of here. I'm gonna live out in the county. You tell me how that's doing over there. By the way, could you send me your check every week or your pension? So um I think that they don't do a good job. And I've said that to the police and the fire, is you send a really dangerous message to me when you want me to support all of these things, but you're not committed to our city. So I'm going to call Mr. Alfred because he could have maybe tried to reach me while I was not uh well and I was sick. And I want to see what he has that's more, but right now my vote would be a no, except I'm going to just uh present. Because I I I want to make sure that I'm not missing some information that they had, that it was my fault I didn't get. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman from the third, you are recognized.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Hope everybody is having a uh great day today. Were the Alderman from the sixteen, you have a question?
Alderman from the sixteenth, you yield to questions from the Alderman from the third.
Will.
All right. Please proceed, Alderman.
Uh thank you. So um you know, I'll say first off, I I most certainly am uh in support of every firefighter within the city of St. Louis and everything they do for us. I know that it's very important for them. Uh just like our police officers and any first responders to retire well. Often what it is that they do because they risk their lives every single day and it could be snatched from them just running into um danger, which most of us are running from. So uh I'm in no way, shape, form or fashion uh attempting to not ensure that the future of our fire department and uh potential employees uh receive uh the benefits they reserve in the city as well. Um you know, it's just paying close attention to what it is that we will uh potentially inherit once we all are not here. Uh so with that, uh most certainly was, uh you know, uh I believe I voted for this the first time that uh you know, it came out. Since then, we all, like we said, have had some conversations and talked about potentially uh what could be uh negative effects from it. I did want to clear some things up and uh kind of get some ideas uh while we all are here, because there is some misinformation, some things that I believe that uh maybe I maybe I've taken the wrong way or not have maybe heard the, you know, best information on and I, you know, received as well. Uh but there are some qualms that I have with it. And I'd like to just, you know, since this is our last uh kind of roundabout with it. Like to kind of work those things out. Um and my first question will be um with these being two separate systems, the first system is uh locked by membership, if you will, since uh what year? Is it two thousand and thirteen?
Correct. F R S, the the old system, if you will, the old retirement system um was locked in uh twenty twelve, twenty thirteen.
And exactly, if you, we know, I, this is a question that I also have needed to ask, but if you don't know, it's fine. It's something I don't know as well, so I'm not putting you on the spot in the situation where I can pull that number up. But do you know exactly how many firefighters were there and included in that particular pension system when they locked it?
I think you're asking me, I I do, I know how many members retirees and widows are in the old system and in the in the new system. If those are the the numbers you have, but I don't know how many at the time. I guess it would be it's probably the those numbers that I have. So there's thirteen hundred and eighty one members in F R S, the old system. That's eight hundred and ninety retirees and three hundred widows that are all receiving benefits from the old or frozen system. Which which will continue to administer benefits for roughly eighty more years.
Awesome. But that's a long time. Um do we know how many we have right now in our our new system?
Yeah, the F R P, um I think this is year to date, there's about seven hundred and thirty, I think seven hundred and twenty eight members and about a hundred uh retirees, give or take.
All right. So we're looking at about eight hundred, eight hundred and twenty, eight hundred and thirty, roughly?
Approximately, yes, sir.
And within the old system, we're looking at somewhere around one thousand eight hundred people we're taking care of.
Little bit more than that, roughly, roughly, probably twenty one hundred.
Twenty one hundred. Um so the reason I bring that up, because that is a pretty large number. Um thing, and especially compared to what it is that we have today, uh what it is, um you know, what they did, you know, some time ago, I think was, you know, very beneficial to them at the time because they have made substantial amounts of um uh I would say investments and um you know, with those investments that they made, they, you know, they've done a great job in making sure that their uh retirement system has grown. And you know, the money that they've invested has grown as well. So with that, and it being locked at some point in time, let's say in the next fifty years, um you know, unfortunately, we know that we all uh at some point in time will uh you know, pass on, things change. Uh and you know, with that uh we'll probably have more firefighters that come into the fold. So let's say, for instance, you know, over the next ten or twenty years, we do have uh, you know, let's say fifty people that are not there on that old, uh it would probably be a lot more than that. And that's, you know, I deal with a lot of situations like I probably need to stay away from that because it brings me to an emotional place. So I I'll go more into the actual numbers, my apologies. Um all right. So at some point in time, we know that with this locked system, it will phase out, correct? It may not be within the next twenty or thirty years, but like you said, the next eight, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's right, Alderman, because effectively, uh back when pension reform was happening to the firefighter retirement system, uh the city tried to reform the current retirement system. And a judge uh said, you can't do that. That's illegal. You can't change benefits uh that have been promised to people. So the only way to achieve pension reform was to create a new system and have a cutoff where firefighters of a date certain would go into a new system with a reduced benefit, right? Um so that's why, yes, eventually you get to the old system winding up and will like will write its last check uh to retirees, widows, et cetera, in seventy eight years, seventy nine years.
Some time from now. Understood. So when that happens, what we are creating right now is we're merging the systems. And there will be no administrative system that the actual city pays for, for the new pension fund to actually administer um uh you know, the investments that our new firefighters are uh investing into. So uh potentially, well, not potentially, is is that correct? The the people who are administering for the old administrative fund, who is not connected to the city, not paid by the city, they are doing a great job. Um won't take anything away from them, but they will be the ones, or that company in particular, who will still administering the services that are providing services for the independent firefighters um pension system now, right?
Sure. That, yeah, the virtue of this of this board bill is that it streamlines those services. You will have one administrative staff instead of two. You will have one consultant, one fund manager, one actuary, one set of, one auditor that can administer both systems. And the the other real benefit here is that you will have from one cohesive investment strategy for uh uh more assets. So because F R P um is a newer, is a newer retirement system, um it is not allowed to invest uh and diversify into certain asset classes, right? Whereas F R S has been around since eighteen eighty five, um and is is a larger fund, it can diversify and mitigate risk. So to the extent that F R S is allowed to manage both systems, it is going to mitigate risk and increase return uh because it'll be under one cohesive investment strategy.
Right. That's completely understood. But somebody has to administer those funds and ensure that the investments are
But why, why pay two actuaries, why pay two actuaries, two sets of consultants when when you can, when you could pay one?
Right. Well, absolutely. But in the board bill, it says that, I forgot exactly what section it is, but in in any, it explicitly states that uh the current firefighter system, which is our new one, I'm getting, I get confused every now and then, but the old one and the new one. With the new one, the old one can never ever and should not ever have to pay for administrative cost dealing with or associated with the new one. So I I can pull that up real quick, but basically
That's right. No, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So with that, if we're merging them and we're making sure
We're not, we're not merging. The the two systems will remain separate, but just under one management, Board of Trustees.
So if they're under one management, Board of Trustees, and the Board of Trustees are the individuals who are making the decisions, and we didn't have one administrative branch of it that is administrating all of the executive, um you know, pieces of the the business there out here, making sure they're making all the executive decisions. They're doing all the investments and the equities and whatever it is that they're investing in. Um why is it that we're not paying that administration one cost? I don't, I don't understand why that particular piece is in there where you know, we're saying that one administration that exists under the old administration and then you got this new administration, one end up paying for the other within the, and I hope this is making sense.
I I I think it is. If you, if you have one management or administration of the two funds, there will be expenses associated with that, right? You've got to hire staff, um, you've got to uh hire consultants, uh, fund managers, et cetera. So, yeah. There, right now, it's, there's two separate and sets of administrative costs that in the new system and the F R P, the city bears those costs. Uh, in the old system, F R S, that board bears its cost. It's an expense, it's an expense of, of the retirement system, right? So it, it is an expense of the retirement system.
Right, and, and I appreciate that. So that is once again, when, you know, one of the pieces that I'm getting to, at some point in time with us having. Um, less firefighters who be in that old system and more firefighters who be becoming a part of the new system, right? Those administrative costs will change and they will go up contingent upon. Uh, how many firefighters that we have and our population increases. That's one of the things. We get lucky with the city and we do great job. And advertising, you know, our, our homes and our, you know, our amazing. Uh, assets that we have has been a place where people should come and visit and eventually become residents of. We should increase in population with that. We do a great job and also paying our uh. Uh, workers well, we should get an increase in uh firefighters, police officers and all these other divisions that we're trying to increase in as well. So. Um, you know, the thoughts would be with this administration administering both and right now have an administrative cost of a, I believe, a few million, right? Like one point four, one point five, I think you got, may have the numbers in front of you. Um, what is our potential increase in paying these administrative costs when we have merged these potential boards?
Uh, I think you'll see. Fall off, Alderman. The, the new system's administrative costs roughly around four hundred and ninety or five hundred thousand dollars a year. Costs uh the city in its F R P um to administer that retirement system. I think you'll see those costs go away. Um, and the budget for F R S is roughly around a million dollars. Uh, but it, it can continue to absorb that and will likely be able to go down because. Um, there'll be, I think, you know, they can, they've administered at one point, you know, three tiers of, of benefits.
Right, right. So, well, no, and I, 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 I remember speaking to him about that. It's uh, you know, right now, once again, how much is the administrative cost for F R S?
Uh, I think it's right around a million dollars a year is their operating expense.
I'm sorry?
About a million dollars a year is the.
A million. I think I remember like one point one. Um, so with, with that it being right around one point one or just one million, and once again, this is just for F R S and I remember speaking to them as well. Um, they will absorb a lot of costs that we are paying as well. I do, you know, remember that four hundred thousand dollars that we could potentially. Not have to pay based on us already paying that, but those are city employees that we are paying as well, right?
In F R S? No, those are, those are creatures of.
Not F R S, the, the, the new firefighter system, I'm sorry.
Correct. Yes, there are.
We have, I think, three city employees there right now?
Yeah, I, it's a good refresher for us all. The, the composition of that board is two appointments of the mayor, the comptroller. Two active firefighters, uh, one retired firefighter and the budget director. So you've got a four, four, call it city representatives and three firefighter.
Okay, they're, they've been paid right now by the city?
Yes.
So we potentially, uh, do you know how much they've been paid?
I don't. I mean, they, they, they all have salaries, but then there's actual costs, administrative costs above and beyond just the, the salary of those city employees. Because those city, those salaries will be there no matter what. Those are employees, right? So it's the, that, that's not, that's not figured into the. The cost, but they do have, they do, they do grab some folks to staff it. Um, throughout the city and there are real administrative costs uh above and beyond just salaries.
Understood. So what, have, have we figured out what we're going to do with them if we potentially pass this board bill with those employees? What is going to happen? What? So I know board members are not paid, but we have individuals that are paid right now to administer the services that. Are administered for F R S as far as investment services.
Right.
That's the four hundred thousand dollars that, that we are paying, that is supposed to be absorbed if we. Um, potentially merge the administrative um systems that are um. Invest in, you know, our, our, our pension fund, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, no, no board members are paid though.
Right, right, right. And so, so my apologies for the, the, you know, getting that confusing. Definitely not speaking about the board members, just those individuals who are best in our dollars. They are being paid. That administrative cost is about four hundred thousand dollars and they are city and paid, they are, they are city paid employees. They get. They get paid to do that by the city, right?
Correct.
So do we know what we're going to do with those potential jobs? Do they just uh disappear? From my understanding, they do. And what are we doing with those city employees?
Well, I think some of it is just extra responsibility. So we know the comptroller has uh got plenty on, on her plate. Um, and her designee as well is in, is in the office. Uh, the budget director uh is can continue to direct the budget and with all, along with a host of his other responsibilities. Uh, the two mayoral appointments, I believe, also have jobs and tasks that, that, that um they're doing above and beyond this. This, this board representation.
I'm sure. So, so the thought would be, you know, we lose a few city employees, move them around, put them in sp- specific places that have nothing or possibly something to do with it. Investing in something that has uh, nothing to do with the firefighters, of course, because that's been absorbed. Uh, but the thought would be at some point in time, let's say ten or fifteen years down the line. There's another question I need to ask as well. Just, I just want to make sure I clear this piece up now. Um, when there aren't as many individuals in, in the um F R S. And the administrative board has received more firefighters here in the new firefighters pension fund. And they have to administer more services because they have more accounts. What is our potential cost? Because looking at the information that we've had. Um, based on us knowing that what it is that we have now, when we're looking for more firefighters, that's four hundred thousand dollars that we're looking at absorbing. Right, in administrative cost. What does that look like in ten years? You know, is that same at, is it locked in for ten years or we have a lock price to where we're saying, hey, we're only going to pay. The administrative cost for F R S for what it is that they're paying now. Once we merge this administrative board or. You, you know, get rid of these individuals who are investing now, who haven't had. Uh, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar heads, a five hundred million dollar head start. Um, you know, is it locked? What does it look like? What are the administrative costs next year, year after next? Five years from now, do we know what that looks like?
Yeah, I mean, I think you, you said a set of projections based on historical trends of what your operating expenses are going to be uh year over year, right? I mean, I, I, they, they should remain fairly static, but costs go up all around us, right? So a fund manager may raise his fee. So you, you certainly want to index that to around a cost of living adjustment. So. Likely when, when your budgeting expense um doesn't hold true for every budget. Um, and I don't know if it holds true for a pension uh management system budget, but. Typically, you, you add some percentage or index some percentage increase, two or three percent of expenses. Uh, so you can see a ten-year set of projections. So that would be sort of a steady um cost index. That you would look at, maybe a three or four percent adjustment each year just because things cost more year over year.
So, so maybe three hundred thousand dollars over the next ten years possibly as an increase?
Uh, I, I, I want, I want to be careful of the numbers. I mean, so if the budget for, for F R P is, is five hundred thousand. Four hundred ninety or five hundred thousand, it's sort of three percent each year is what, is what you, you could do to be conservative. And ensure you have enough, you're budgeting enough for the expense.
Right, well, so, okay. I, I guess, and I appreciate that. What I also want to ask is with the. Uh, you know, us absorbing, uh. Uh, some of the, the costs associated with F R S. As far as administering things, there also is a cost associated with um potential deficits that they have. Um, if, you know, investments potentially don't go as projected, is that correct?
Uh, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Okay, so the question would be, would, would the city have to foot a bill? Let's say for instance, there's, there's a deficit there. Let's say, you know, we got a. They, they've made over five hundred thousand dollars. This year, we know the market is, is up and down.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's say this is, we lose a hundred million dollars, we're bankrupt, right? What does it look like if they lose a hundred million dollars in one year? How does that, does the city have to foot that bill?
Yeah, the reaction is, I think what you're asking is that i- i- in the, in a down market or where the, the system doesn't perform as well. In, in the, in the market or those investments, the investment returns are below the projected returns. The city is still obligated to fund the pension system at what level it's obligated to fund the pension system at, correct?
Yes, sir. So, I mean, just give us.
That's the case, that's the case, that's the case in any pension system.
We can get an idea of what it would look like on a big number, right? Let's say basically it's ten bucks. And maybe that's a super small, but it gives us an idea of, I mean, what, what, what is a real idea of what the city could potentially be at stake for? If we have a really bad year of investment and we got both of the systems merged. Um, you know, let's, once again, let's, what, what does a fifty million dollar problem look like? Once we see, which we seen before. But the city was not, uh, fortunately, wasn't in this particular.
Yeah, yeah. I would argue, I would argue the larger portfolio of having, of having both assets under management and a single investment strategy. Allows you to diversify and mitigate those risks. Um, and you stay away from more equity investments, which is what F R P is top heavy in. Um, and these are people smarter than me. I mean, you're looking at the guy who, you know, passed on Uber when it was, uh, you know, a stock fresh uh that I could have purchased. So these are people smarter than me who are making those decisions. So, but I can tell you what is, what is fact is the larger. Uh, investment portfolio you have, uh, you have more access to asset classes. Uh, that whereby you can diversify your risk um and protect in those down years. So that, that would be, that would be a good thing here, that there be one set of uh managers, one set of invest, one set of. Investment strategy criteria for.
Well, only to a degree, Alderman Odenberg, because if we have monies, then once again, it says that explicitly in uh, in the board bill that. Their, their monies can't touch our new firefighter system. What they can do is invest in particular things together, but the returns. And the fails come out equally. So if the city invests twenty million dollars and they invest fifty million dollars and we go in together because. We, as a city right now, don't have fifty million dollars to invest, but you can only get into this particular investment fund with fifty million and. You know, all together, we're going to go in seventy. The fifty million that was invested for the F R S and the twenty million that was invested with the city. Um, you know, whatever our losses are, those are cut equally based on that twenty percent, I mean, that twenty million and fifty million that you put in. It's not. Uh, you know, separate. What, what we lose is what we lose, what they lose is what they lose, but it's based on the fifty million that they put in and twenty million that we put in. So. You know, once again, let's say for instance that we have a really bad year. And we get down to a point where the city only has, we don't have a whole lot of money. I think we got like a hundred and sixty-some million. It's very low. You all, I mean, the. F R S did an excellent job. Uh, over the last ten years. I mean, they, they did, they did do amazing. You cannot negate that at all. They've done a great job. But once again, my, my whole point here is to get us to a place where we really understand, um, you know, the downfall of this as well. Because if, you know, stuff hits the fan. And, you know, which is what I want to be clear about. Where is the city at in terms of having to pay for that deficit?
Well, that, Alderman, I, I would, I would, I would answer that, but that risk exists regardless of, of the, the effectuation of this board bill. The market, I, I want to make sure we're not conflating administrative costs of, of, of managing retirement systems and the actual. Uh, investments in, in uh stock, in the stock market. So that, that, that risk is, exists today, right? That the market risk exists for your portfolio, mine, as well as public pension system.
Yeah, but the city's not at risk for it right now. With the F R S lost a hundred million dollars, the city's not at risk for paying any more than we paid out. The last four to five.
Well, no, the city is obligated to, the city, no, the city.
Pay an extra thirty or forty. If in the event where we are merging these boards, we will be uh having to pay. You, you know, more, a, a, a hell of a lot more than what we're paying right now, just regularly putting in. I, I, I would say, I think you got some paperwork in front of you. Over the last ten years, it would show. What the city would possibly have to pay if we were involved.
The city would have to pay that regardless. The F R S system, the city's obligated to make those contributions.
Well, no, those are regular contributions. Those are not the contributions that we made in case of the deaths. And, and they actually had a loss, a really big loss or a net loss. Those, those, it's totally different. I, so if you can, you know, make a text message real quick, but it's.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, yeah, and, and that's why I asked, once, once again, for specific numbers. If we, they lost fifty million, what would the city have to pay? Those are things we need to know because if it happens, we're going to have to foot that bill. And if we have, like, right now, inflation is going through the roof. We have no clue what things are going to look like. Two years from now, three years from now, with everything that's going on in Russia and across the globe right now, we have. You know, oil prices going through the roof, things will hit us back. All of the money that the United States government spent for COVID throughout, I mean. It's going to hit us back. One way or another, we will pay for it. The American citizens will. We are really paying for it at the pump. You know, so with that, we don't know exactly what things will look like just within the next few months or, you know, a few years in terms of what. Um, you know, the market will do. Once again, we all have done well now. I'm talking about what happens when we have a bad day or a really bad year. What are we looking at paying? Because we will have to pay normal, I mean, more than our normal contribution. That I can stand on. The question is, is how much, which is, you know, what I want to answer. And I do understand the difference between administrative costs. And what is I'm speaking about now. That's why I wanted to get rid of the administrative piece of. Uh, before we got into this, this part, because we will have to, once again, put that administrative bill regardless of what happens with inflation as well. Um, and that's something that we don't know what it'll be in five or ten years. I don't think that's, you know, added in, since we have an independent company that's charging us for a service. What is our service going to look like when inflation goes up and we're still not bringing in extra tax dollars? What is that cost is going to be associated with administering that private fund for thousands of firefighters at that point? Not to say they don't need it, but right now, city is not, you know, running around trying to figure out. Uh, you know, how to pay for, you know, firefighter, that firefighter, I think we're doing well. We're trying to figure out what to do with. Uh, you know, police right now. So with that, you know, I, I, I will you.
Alright, thank you very much, Alderman the third. Alderman, from the twenty-fifth, you have your hand up.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I have to point out again, you know, this is. First of all, the last, you know, thirty minutes or so, you know. The chair of the Public Employees Committee at the Board of Alderman was just asking very pertinent questions as it pertains to this particular board bill. That board bill should have been in the Public Employees Committee versus Public Safety. Um, this is an employee benefit. It is directly tied to, uh, you know, the Department of Personnel and, you know, other. Um, entities associated with the administration of our benefits and should have been in that particular committee. However, you know, some of the other items that were addressed during that discussion, um, you know, I have to just call out. Um, one, you know, F R P, um, the new pension system. Is not a mandated requirement funding. So thi- this was one of the items that we had a situation with. Original F R S plan, when we hit the major downturn in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. We had to furlough employees for multiple years um during that economic downturn. We had to provide fully, quote unquote, fully funding the F R S plan because of, you know, the market conditions at the time. And the investment strategy that they had. Um, and, you know, it, it was a huge burden on the city's budget. We had more flexibility with our E R S plan and the police pension system than we did with F R S. Because of the judicially mandated funding requirements for F R S. So there is a distinction between F R P and F R S with that particular requirement. As it pertains to, you know, being fiscally responsible with our city's money going forward in the event of, of an economic downturn. Second to that, you know, there's another uh issue at play, which I referenced earlier, which is just the local control component. That was one of the primary issues that we had conversations about with the F R S, uh, you know, back in the day, the old plan. Um, and it was one of the issues that, you know, really created uh the F R S. Um, the new system, or I'm sorry, F R P, the new system. So, and then, you know, thirdly. Um, which is not of as much of an issue right now because F R P is, uh, you know, working in partnership with, um, you know, personnel, fire, et cetera. Um, on the administration of disability. Um, on the administration of disability benefits, but at the time, you know, our FRS plan was administering. And making decisions for disability, uh, benefits underneath the plan. And was not being consistent in how they were awarding those benefits to members. And so it was a very political process for members, and it wasn't always based off of the health and well-being of those members. Um, there were many post dispatch stories at the time that we went through this reform, um, that documented some of the concerns relative to disability administration. Um, and so, you know, I don't point that out, uh, you know, to say that that's still an issue, because, um, you know, one, they're not doing as much of the administration on disabilities right now. Um, but, you know, to essentially point out that this could be a slippery slope in terms of what what benefits come next, what's change, what changes can come next. Um, and where do we go from here? But, you know, it, I do have concerns, grave concerns about how this can be administered going forward. And the financial impact that this would have in an economic downturn for our city. Um, not just in terms of the budgetary implications there, but also the services that we have to cut whenever we have to furlough employees. Um, due to, you know, revenue restrictions and the, you know, the burden of having to, um, move forward. There's also some ethical concerns for sure, um, that I think, you know, uh, could be highlighted. Um, I'm not going to dive too much into that, but I think at the end of the day, um, you know, I think the, you know, Public Employees Committee would be the best. Um, committee to review this at this point in time, and I would like to make a motion that we refer back to committee to the, uh, Public Employees Committee.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to refer Board Bill fifty five to Public Employees Committee.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved to second by the Alderman from the eighth. Uh, Sharita, please call the roll, I believe.
No discussion.
Uh, pardon me. I apologize. We, yeah, as a sponsor, you actually raise your hand, because you're not the sponsor of this motion. Thank you. Alderman from the sixteenth, you have your hand raised. You're recognized on this motion.
Thank you. I would like to encourage all all those folks that have have been tracking this, have been in discussions with both myself, Local seventy three. Um, and others to to vote no on moving this back. This is, this is clearly a a floor stunt. Um, from one of the few aldermen that was down here during this fight. Um, and we have had a full vet of this discussion. I do want to clear up a few things, um, I think that were said around local control. Um, we have local control. The right now of Alderman from the twenty fifth is locally representing. This is not a board bill that changes any benefits. This is not a board bill that reverts back to any old system. Um, the mayor can still veto it. The Board of Aldermen can still pass it or not. Last time I checked, that's local ordinances and local decision makers having local control regarding disability that was mentioned. Uh, if the right now of Alderman from the twenty fifth were to read the text of this board bill, it specifically calls out that the city can maintain a disability board. We knew that that was a big sticking point for the city, and in the negotiations and in the spirit of compromise. Disability decisions and disability review are retained by a disability board with a city majority control. So I would urge everyone to vote again sending this back. This is rarely done, uh, for for, uh, for a bill to get to get sent back to committee. Because of, because of an opposition, quite frankly, um, and, uh, that's how I plan to vote is no on sending this back to committee.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? All right. So we do have a motion in a second to take Board Bill fifty five to Public Employees. Uh, Sharita, please call the roll. Sharita, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
No.
Alderman Evans. Alderman Page.
Pass.
Alderman Gracia.
No.
Alderman Carter.
No.
Alderman Rice.
Hi.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Lappy. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
Thank you. Alderman Stevens.
Pass.
Alderman Switzer.
Yes.
Alderman Howard.
No.
Alderman Green.
Oh, no.
Alderman Odenberg.
No.
Alderman Peel.
No.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis.
No.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Keys.
No.
Alderman Walker.
No.
Alderman Bakoro.
No.
Alderman Orion.
No.
Alderman Kong.
Hi.
Alderman Clark Hubbard.
No.
Alderman Boy.
No.
Alderman Grass.
No.
President Ballmer.
No.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook.
No.
Alderman Evans.
No.
Alderman Page.
No.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Stevens.
No.
Alderman Todd. Alderman Spencer.
No.
Three I votes and twenty-three no votes.
All right, by your, pardon me. By your motion, you failed to pass, uh, by your vote, you failed to pass the motion made by the Alderman twenty fifth. Uh, we will now continue, uh, further discussion with Board Bill fifty five. Uh, Alderman from the third, you are recognized for the second time.
Thank you, sir. I I just like to say, I hope, um, you know, everybody is voting in the understanding of. You know, which I I see it looks like, uh, the Alderman wants to have a vote on, and he had put some work into this, and I do appreciate Alderman from the twenty fifth. Uh, you know, his concerns were most most certainly valid, uh, and I and I want everybody to, uh, once again, please, uh. Saying about the day or tomorrow or this week or next week, the question comes down to what happens five years from now? And what will the city be, uh, footing the bill for when we don't have all these ARPA funds? When all of the Rams money is dried up and we're trying to figure out what returns look like? We need to know if at any given time, any pension system in the city takes a hit, that we have to. Find out where to get funds from to foot that bill. We need to know what that looks like. And this is one of those times where we're making decisions that we're all looking at projected futures. Um, you know, and this ain't, you know, I'm not giving a boogeyman speech, but the truth is the truth. I think that the firefighters and FRS has done an excellent job, uh, right now. They really, really have. They turn. Uh, five hundred million dollars into over, you know, this is right at a billion bucks. You you can't beat that type of. Uh, in investment partners and people who have an investment strategy that works. You know, but we also have to look at the thousands and thousands of firefighters who will eventually be here at some point in time in the future. While these great men and women have served their, uh, city well and done their. Uh, you know, life of great justice by being able to save lives are people that are coming up right behind and want to be in the same position that see them doing well and say, I want to be like that fire department. I want to be like that firefighter. Uh, we gotta give them the chance to to be able to have that type of life as well. And I'm not saying that this is one of those things that's gonna curtail me, but I, you know, I will say that. This will have impacts if there is negative impacts to be had. And, you know, we have to mitigate as much negativity as we can within the city right now, when we have potential downfalls when it comes down to budget problems. Uh, we haven't always been in a position that we are right now, and we won't always be in the position that we are right now. We don't think about the decisions that we're making right these, you know, right the second. And think about our ten-year projections from now and where it is that we could potentially be in the event where, you know, we do fall hard. We gotta have a cushion. And I don't think we built up that cushion yet to be able to make risky decisions that put us in a position where, um, we really don't know what we could be fit to build for. So, you know, with that, I support the firefighters, I support, um, Odenberg's efforts, um, and and the unions. Once again, I'm not saying anything negative about them, but the real is the real. One day, the administrators there who don't work for the city. Who don't get paid by the city, uh, who are, uh, paid now independently. Uh, will eventually. Uh, solely depend on the city for their source of administrative, uh, revenue. And, you know, the question is, you know, what does that look like as well? So, you know, with everybody, you know, voting to to vote this out, to vote those other things that we have to think about. Same thing with us spending ARPA funds and everything that we doing right now. What are we gonna be looking at in ten years from now? We planting all of these seeds. We will sow them at some point in time. There's no up, up and up for any investor in the, you know, the the investment sector. Everybody sees the downturn. We just want to know what that looks like. So with that being said, I appreciate everybody, um, and 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 I yield. Thank you. We can't hear you, can't hear you, Mr. President.
Um, hello, I'm live. I'm not muted. Can you hear me? Hello? Um.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
All right, Alderman twenty third, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just, just, I know meetings going on forever, but. To say, gee, well, at least we don't have an obligation to fund that pension. This is what we were sued for back in the day. Because we didn't fund the pensions. And the city and the the different pension systems weren't funded. And we had to go out and pass a board bill to get the money to fund it. We have three-year and five-year smoothing, but to sit there and say, well, we're gonna use the money when I gonna fund the pension if things get tight. Their pension system, if things get tight, we're gonna use that money for the city. First off, it'll end up in court. First day, we're not funding it properly. And, you know, I mean, that that's a fact. That's how it ended up in court the last time. But, I mean, we have to fund all the other systems. And you're right, the it's it's driven by the stock market. When I checked a while back. Like the police pension system, I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, this year is probably gonna be about a hundred million dollar shark. Because we have to keep it funded at eighty percent. We get three, in fact, you're smoothing. But we were not taken advantage of when the stock market was doing very well. We should have been funding them up to a hundred percent, and then we wouldn't get hit as hard now, but we were not doing that. So now, these systems are gonna have to be funded. We're gonna get three-year smoothing, and we'll hope and pray the stock market comes up. But the statement, I guess it bothers me a little bit, is that under this si- system, the the new system, we're not obligated to fund it. That's bad. I mean, to say, well, if things are tight, we're not gonna fund your pension, and we're going to. You know, and 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 eventually they'll sue. This 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 board bill has nothing to do with that. But I I, when I heard that statement, so the reason I jumped out is to sit there and tell the firefighters. Yeah, if things get a little tight, we're gonna not fund your pension, but we are going to, uh, use it to run the city on. But we have to fund all the other systems, and that that's unfair. And then they eventually they'll sue. And eventually the courts will say, no, you have to fund, you know, it's not, it that's not even our obligation this year because of the stock market. For the systems that we absolutely have to fund, it's gonna be in the millions and millions and millions of dollars. The good news is we'll have three and five-year smoothing, and hopefully things turn around. So we 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 have time to to fund them. That that's the good news. But I I did want to say that I, when I, when I heard that, I was a little bit setback by it, because. It's no different than, you know, and and it's true, we ended up having to lay people off. I was here for all that mess. They took our ward capital away, and we had to do everything we could. We, even the, uh, the workers had to take two-week furloughs and one-week furlough, depending on your position. At the time, I did take the two-week furlough. Uh, and that was all because we were not funding the system, and we let the system go so low. That we got sued, and the court said, no, you have to fund these systems. So then we had to come up with a way to fund them all at one time. So I I I would say I would be more concerned than this, this bill has nothing to do with how that's funded. Eventually, that'll end up in court, I'm sure, but. If we don't correct it, or we don't fund it, and we let it go low, that will be a bigger catastrophe than taking the three and five years that we have. To keep something. I I just wanted to correct that, and if I'm very wrong, somebody could correct me, but I am pretty sure, because I lived through that. And and, uh, so a- as far as I know, this is the only system that we're not obligated to fund. And that that sends a pretty good message to the firefighters. If we said that for the city workers, if we said. See, we're we're just not gonna fund your pension system. We're going to, uh, you know, but we have an obligation, because again, with all that was involved in the lawsuit. And all this was after the lawsuit, and they'll be, and again, I believe there'll be a lawsuit on this. We can't just arbitrarily say, we're not gonna fund your pension system. You know, it, uh, so anyway, I just wanted to 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 bring that out. Now, and I'm sure that at some point. They're going to take it to court, especially if we let that system run lower, we're not using, we're not keeping it funded properly. And and that's, that's how we got in trouble last time, and that was not the present mayor or the mayor before. It was actually a couple few mayors back that, uh, you know, they they took it to court. They, all three of the systems are for the systems. All sued the city, and what the court said, you have to keep it funded at least eighty percent. So we always have to pay that gap, the difference between the eighty percent and, so if it gets under that. But but the good news is we don't have to pay it all tomorrow. We we, you know, the and and what what should have been being done under previous administrations. When the stock market was good and we didn't have to put as much in, we should have put extra in. So that we would have, we're gonna have a bigger gap this year because we didn't put back extra money. Anyway, that I just wanted to throw that out, but did this bill has nothing to do with the funding, you know, that that should be another bill or. Something in the future that says we have to fund this, that we're responsible or liable to keep it funded. Um, that should be something, this bill doesn't address that. This bill just simply puts the. Systems together in the sense that they're governed by the same people. Anyway, thank, thank you. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
All right, Alderman, thank you very much. Uh, any further discussion? Any further discussion? I don't see any hands raised, so Alderman from the sixteenth, you are recognized to close under protection of Board Bill fifty five.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, members of the board. I'll be brief here in my closing, but I do feel important just to, uh, give a quick upshot. Again, the Alderman from the twenty-third in his closing remarks there is absolutely correct. Board Bill fifty five does not get rid of the new pension system. It does not get rid of any of the savings associated with those benefit reductions. It does not get rid of local control, uh, and it does not release the city's control for dis- disability review cases. Uh, a couple of virtuous things that I believe it does do, because. Uh, a couple of virtuous things that I believe it does do because it was mentioned in this um, throughout this conversation and in the committee actually as to this would be better effort focused on actually writing some bad benefit wrongs of real firefighters who got squeezed by uh this unique system of pension reform. And I'm going to give everyone a real live example, and it's the portability uh case. One of the biggest issues in the fire department is portability. As you may know, in the state of Missouri, uh, you can move your vested public pensions from one retirement system to another. Much like in the private sector, you can move your 401K when you change jobs. We have over sixty medics in the St. Louis Fire Department uh that have vested pensions in the ERS. They are not able to move those pension dollars to their new retirement system, which is either FRS or FRP because of this unique situation that we have of two actuaries. It cannot be done. I think everybody wants to do it. They think it's the right thing to be able to happen. But because we have two actuaries, the current ERS eh will not release the pension dollars because you will have effectively two different present value calculations because the two actuaries have to remain independent and cannot sort of get together on a set of projections for the present value of any medic in previous ERS. This is something real and tangible that helps a firefighter. Because as you know, if you, if you have a 401K and I've switched jobs a couple of times, it's great that you can bring it all over and have it all managed and not have several different pension systems uh where you can benefit, we can realize more benefit. That's a real fix. Because we can have just one actuary managing both systems who can give one independent present value calculation. And sixty plus medics can now move over portability, move over their ERS pensions. So that's just something real right now that this board bill can do. And lastly, I think, you know, I I've said this before, so it's not poetic or profound, but this puts firefighters and members uh in charge of their own financial decision making uh in the way of an investment strategy that allows them access to certain asset classes that they can't get at the present time. And I think that's important for our first responders at all levels. Mr. President, that I close. I renew my motion rather. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Oliver from the sixteenth is the move and second that we perfect board bill fifty five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No.
All right, the ayes have it, the motion carries. We are perfected by board bill fifty five. Sharita, I believe we have uh
one zero five.
Yes, so all rooms, all room sixteen. Go, please proceed, Sharita.
I get it. Board bill one zero five introduced by Alderwoman Ingracia and ordinance recommended by the City of St. Louis Planning Commission pertaining to signage plan overlay district, establishing the St. Louis City SC Stadium Area Signage Plan Overlay District, providing definitions and findings pertaining to said district, further providing providing signage control regulations for said district and contain an emergency clause.
All right, all the room from the sixth are recognized on perfection of board bill one zero five.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect board bill one oh five.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by all from the sixth. We have a second from the alderman from the eleventh, perfect more bill one oh five. Uh, please proceed, Alderwoman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, board bill one oh five is um creating a signage plan overlay district for the approximately thirty acres that make up the MLS campus. It's really designed for places like um Enterprise Center and the Cardinal Stadium to provide thematically uniform wayfinding for the um public to be able to make their way in and around the stadium and creates a process that doesn't require the MLS team to come back every single time they need to move or change a sign. And so I would uh respectfully request for your vote to move this forward today. Happy to take questions if anyone has.
Thank you, Alderwoman. Any discussion, any further discussion on board bill one on one oh five? Seeing no hands raised, all of the six, you're welcome to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
All right, we have a motion and second to perfect board bill one oh five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, motion carries. By your vote, you perfected board bill one oh five.
That is the extent of board bills for perfection.
All right, thank you, thank you. Uh, third reading consent.
Board bills ninety six, one hundred as amended, one zero three, one zero six, and one ten.
Right. Over the twenty fifth, you are recognized on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
All right, we have a motion from the twenty fifth, the second by the all of the twenty seventh. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Laffey.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Hill.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Cole.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Robert.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boy.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Twenty eight eye votes.
All right, by your vote, sustain the motion of the alderman of the twenty fifth, third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Board bill ninety six, one hundred as amended, one zero three, one zero six, and one ten.
All right, all of the business being suspended, the president will in open session affix their signature here to to the end of these may become law. All right, all of the twenty fifth, you're recognized on our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by the alderman of the twenty fifth, second by the alderman of the fourteenth. We approve our courtesy resolutions calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First one, I'm going to have her hand up.
I apologize. Uh, all of them from the first. Please turn your mic on.
I had my hand up before the vote. I was just asking if I could put my name on resolution one thirty five.
Uh, certainly. Sharita, please make note of that.
No noted.
All right, I apologize for not seeing your eyes, but my glasses are up and down sometimes.
No problem.
All right. Okay, so we have an eye vote on the phone. All those opposed? By your motion, we have uh adopted our courtesy resolutions calendar. All right, first ring of resolutions.
We have known.
Second reading of resolutions and report of committees.
Resolution one ten committee sub as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook. The Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis at the Board of Aldermen hereby recommends that the Port Authority participate in an industrial revenue bond transaction with the developer to provide fifteen years of real property tax abatement in the following percentages. Ninety percent for the first five years, seventy five percent for the next five years and fifty percent for the last five years. And a sales tax exemption on construction material for the project.
All right, all the woman from the second, you're recognized on the adoption of resolution one ten committee substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I move to adopt resolution one ten committee substitute as amended.
Entertain a second?
Second.
All right, I didn't catch a second. Who threw me a number? Okay, for, all right, thank you very much. So it's been moved by all from the second, second by the all of them from the first that we adopt uh resolution one ten committee substitute as amended. All of them, please proceed.
Ms. President, so I am back again. Um, the other, the um, I won't go over everything. It was just rest. So some of the um great things about this um project is is located in the second ward. Um, IBEW one has committed ten million um dollars in equity investment into the Lighthouse Point Project. And SLDC has provided um information for phase one and phase two, which is it'll be a three hundred and seventy five room hotel. Um, eighty thousand square feet of indoor water park, thirty five thousand square feet for conference rooms, um fifty condos, thirty thousand square feet of retail, a two hundred slip marina. Um, SLDC did give this a scoring of five out of five for the indoor water park as well as a four point seven five out of five for the marina and the hotel slip. Um, and I I will take any questions from anyone who who has any.
All right, thank you very much, Alderwoman. All the one from the sixth, you have your hand raised. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to request a roll call vote on this.
All right, so noted. Thank you very much. All right, any further discussion, any further discussion?
Mr. President, um, we do have two amendments that were put in the drive for this.
Okay, would you like to introduce your amendments? Everyone has, everyone has the amendments in the drive? All right, proceed with your first amendment then.
Okay, um, so uh, let's see. Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend for amendment number one. It's a resolution one ten committee substitute.
I'll second that. All right, it's been moved by the second and seconded by the all of them, all the men from the twenty third that we adopt amendment number one. All the one from the second, please proceed.
Okay, so what this um amendment does, and I'll I'll read it, it's whereas the Port Authority shall provide at least one report to the all Board of Aldermen and the public regarding the expected environmental impact of the project before construction begins and after approvals from the relevant state and federal agencies um which have been granted.
All right. Any further discussion to the amendment besides reading it, Alderwoman?
No.
All right. Any discuss as to amendment number one, any further discussion on amendment number one? Oliver from the fifth, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, with the Alderwoman from the second, yield for a question.
Uh, yes, I will.
All right, but before we proceed, Alderman from the fifth, we need to see your live face. Not that your picture is stunning. Can you get us a camera view of your your live person? There we go. We yield the questions from the alderman from the fifth.
Yes, I will.
All right, please proceed, Alderman.
Uh, just a quick question about this amendment. Uh, when, and and I like the way the amendment reads because I will say along with some of my fellow uh alders earlier in uh this meeting, I do have some concerns about environmental impacts of the marina. Uh, I'm trying to figure out what the teeth, what teeth uh are available through this amendment. What happens if down the road, the Board of Aldermen decides that there are concerns worthy of making changes? I'm not sure. Tell me what this amendment will do if the Board of Aldermen down the road has issues uh with portions of this project, especially the marina.
Well, with the marina, if this is not um if all of the checks and balances has are not reached with the federal agencies, Army Corps Engineer, it won't happen. Um, the marina part won't happen at all. Um, and with the um, the other part, so are you wanting to know like if further down the line, the 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 marina, are you wanting to know if the marina doesn't go through? What happens? I'm sorry, I'm need to understand more of your question.
Just, I I'm going to request the uh amendment is very short. Could I request that you read it a second time?
Okay, sure. Um, whereas the Port Authority shall provide at least, at least one report to the Board of Aldermen and the public regarding the expected environmental impact of the project before construction begins and after approvals from the relevant state and federal agencies have been granted.
Okay, wonderful. Let me refine.
Are you asking if all legislation can be repealed?
Or what actions can be taken if those environmental reports are provided to the Board of Aldermen and the Board of Aldermen has issues with the content of the report? Uh, what can, what can take place? What can be done?
I'm sorry, the board bill can be repealed. Did you hear me?
Uh, yes, I was just thinking.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I yield back.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, any further discussion? I saw a hand up, then it went down. Any further discussion? All right, seeing no hands raised, Oliver from the second, you're uh recognized to close on amendment number one.
Okay, I renew my motion.
All right, there's been a request for a roll call. Uh, we have our motion and second on amendment number one. This is to approve amendment number one to resolution one ten committee substitute as amended. Sharita, please call.
Point of order.
Uh, yes.
I believe there was a roll call request for the resolution, not for the amendment.
Oh, I apologize. It's been a long, long morning. I apologize. I have my notes, I wrote roll call and then I I skipped right over. I apologize. Thank you. So we have a motion and second for the amendment number one. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Ayes have it, the motion carries. We have adopted amendment number one. All the woman uh from the second, you have the second amendment.
Yes, Ms. President, um, thank you. I would um like to make a motion to amend uh to amend number amendment number two to the resolution one ten committee substitute as amended.
All right, entertain a second.
Second.
From the second, uh, and I believe the first second was by the older woman from the sixth to adopt amendment number two to resolution one ten committee substitute as amended. All right, uh please proceed, Alderwoman from the second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and read this. And it's whereas a marina will not be constructed unless it receives required permits from any applicable state and federal agencies, including the Army Corps Engineers and the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on amendment number two? Any further discussion? All right, all hands are down, all hands are on deck. Thank you. We will then let you close, all of them from the second on your amendment number two.
I renew my motion.
All right, been moved in segment that we adopt resolution number two to amendment to resolution once ten may substitute as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. By your vote, you've adopted the second resolution. We will now move back to uh resolution one ten committee substitute as amended and and amended again. Any further discussion on this topic? Seeing no hands raised, all of them from the second, you are recognized to close on the resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Alderwoman um from the thirteenth who worked with me with the amendments. Um, I do appreciate your assistance. Also, um, this is going to create five hundred, approximately five hundred and eleven jobs with an average salary of thirty five thousand one hundred um with those jobs. We have received letters of support from Missouri State Senator Carla May, Missouri State Rep Marlene Terry, St. Louis County Councilwoman Shalonda Webb. Um, and I believe that this is a great project for not only the second ward, but for the city of St. Louis. Um, this project is going to be an entertainment destination, um, something that we typically have to travel to other areas to do, um, areas that are not actually close to us. Um, so I think that this is gonna be more family friendly and our children, but and our adults alike will enjoy this, um, this project. So, thank you, and I renew my motion.
All right, thank you. So with a motion to second on this resolution, we will have a request for a roll call. So, Sureita, please call the roll on resolution one ten committee substitute as amended.
Alder Woman Tyus, aye. Alder Woman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alder Woman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alder Woman Ingracia.
No.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alder Woman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Present.
Alderman Lappy.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Present.
Alder Woman Switzer.
No.
Alder Woman Howard.
Aye.
Alder Woman Green.
Present.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alder Woman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alder Woman Davis.
Aye.
Alder Woman Spencer.
Aye.
Alder Woman Keys.
Aye.
Alder Woman Walker.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alder Woman Walker.
Aye.
Alderman McQuarrel.
Aye.
Alderman DeRyan.
No.
Alderman Con.
Present.
Alder Woman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alder Woman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Graz.
Aye.
President Ballmer.
Aye.
Nineteen a votes, three no votes, and six voted present.
All right, by your vote, we have adopted resolution one ten committee substitute as amended.
Thank you.
All right.
Resolution one twenty-two sponsored by Alder Woman Middlebrook recommending the city of St. Louis Port Authority provide a personal property tax abatement and a sales tax exemption exemption construction material for the Procter and Gamble Manufacturing Company.
All right, all room for the second, you are recognizing adoption of resolution one twenty-two.
Thank you, Miss President, members of the board. I'm able to adopt resolution one twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion by the second. I believe the second was by the older one from the eleventh uh, that we adopt resolution one twenty-two. Uh, all of them, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, resolution one twenty-two is an industrial revenue bond, um, transaction with Procter and Gamble, and it's gonna provide ten years of fifty percent personal property tax abatement and sales tax exemption on construction materials for their project. And, um, that's what I have, so thank you.
All right. Any further discussion on resolution one twenty-two? Any further discussion? All right, seeing no hands, uh, all the one from the second, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
All right. It's been moved to second. We adopt resolution one twenty-two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, uh, Alder Woman Tyus hands is up.
Oh, I apologize. All right. All the woman from the first, you're recognized.
Mr. President, members of the boards, um, some of you all will remember, and some of you all will not here on, uh, April nineteenth, we went to adopt our rules. We did not, and then our heck broke loose a few weeks after that. I would move pursuant to rule fifty-eight and seventy-seven to remove resolution one, our board rules for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three legislative session from the engrossment rules resolution and credentials committee to adopt them on the floor of the Board of Aldermen.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. They all want from the first, the second by the all going from the nineteenth. Please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, um, we're supposed to adopt our rules on the first day of the session or as soon thereafter. Um, we didn't do it. Um, I did get up and start to speak about my seniority. Uh, there were some people had some con- some concerns about that. Um, some of the people who had that concern now no longer here. Uh, anyway, um, I've been talking to people. I do intend to bring this resolution out and we can do it. And I want you to look at if you're all are concerned. So I want to cite the rules for you. It's rule fifty-eight, which is for bills. And if you look at the bottom of rule fifty-eight, it'll tell you that, uh, you could remove resolutions the same as you can bills. And rule seventy-seven is specifically to, uh, resolutions. So for those of you all, and if you want me to, I can shoot them over to you real fast if you need me to do that. Okay, I intend to, once we remove it, then I tend to, uh, amend it to take out the word continuous seniority. I have, if you already know, I have continuously said how unfair that is to my part of the city, especially my part of a ward in which when you are racially gerrymandered, then they take you out and then they tell you, but you gotta have continuous seniority. We actually have no way to have continuing seniority because this board illegally racially gerrymandered us. I have been on a full, um, informative talk to as many people as I can to say that is unfair. That's like me being six foot tall, cutting off my legs and then saying, oh, you have to be six foot to get into this ride. I can't do that. You cut my legs off. That is unfair. I have hoped that this board would somehow get to a fairness section on which they say, hey, she lost her right to vote. Two thirds of her ward lost their right to vote. She actually didn't lose any population. We've done something that's really wrong, and how can we do restorative justice? So the first thing is to do is to take the rules out, and then if we do that, then I will address, um, my, um, my amendment, which is three simple, uh, places that you take continuing seniority out, and that would give me my seniority back. I actually have twenty-two years of seniority. It's just not continuing because I had no way to do that. If I had moved to what they call the twentieth ward, that would have given the new twentieth ward all my seniority, but it would not have given the community that I have represented for so long a seniority. If I stay here, I, and which we, I did, I didn't get to vote. My community didn't get to vote, which is illegal. If you live in your house for four years at that time, then the charter said you had a right to vote. Um, and so I've been back here. I came back here to rectify this. Uh, um, whether it's continuing, the Alderman from the twenty-fifth says something that made a lot of sense. I've always argued about the continuing seniority, and he said something on April nineteenth is that it don't make any difference continuing or not. You didn't lose your knowledge. I didn't lose my knowledge. I probably know the rules better than most of the people down here and try to use them to be fair. And I want the rules to be fair to me and my community. So first of all, I'm asking that we, um, move the, uh, resolution out of, uh, uh, engrossment rules, regu- engrossment resolution rules and credentials, and then I'll make a motion to amend, uh, the rules.
All right, so here, wh- wh- we already have, one second, one second. We have a motion, uh, to discharge the resolution from committee. So we will need a civil majority to do that vote. I believe we have the, these, the motion, uh, and a second. Motion from the first ward, a second from, uh, who's the second from?
Fourteen.
Fourteenth.
It was, it was nineteen. It was nineteen, okay.
Nineteenth. All right, thank you very much. Before we proceed with the vote, I do have a hand up. Uh, all the one from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I believe, um, so I, I, I'm on the rules committee. Um, we've met differently this session, um, but I was under the understanding that the intention here was to bring forth a slew of rules that were, um, rule changes that were recommended by the clerk. Um, and I think that this discussion is still ripe for committee because there is a whole lot um, that needs to get changed probably before we move into, um, into a new setup of fourteen aldermen. Um, and some of these things could be put into place now to pave that way. I also think that we need to consider, uh, if we are still meeting virtually, I think we need to put some things in our rules, um, to make ourselves more accessible to the community, um, here in City Hall, folks that are showing up, um, here as well. So, um, I, I think that this, I think it is unfortunate that it has taken this long to address the rules for this session. I think that we should have been, we should have had these meetings. I thought that we were going to have these meetings over the summertime. So I would, um, I would really like to request, uh, that the chairman of the rules committee call a meeting, um, and hopefully we can get, we can get some movement on that. Um, but I, I do think that this conversation, uh, it needs to happen in committee because I believe the vote count changes, uh, once, once we have fully adopted it. So, um, and I, I do want to clarify, uh, Mr. President, does the does the motion to remove from committee need a two-thirds majority to pass?
Is my understanding is a civil majority.
Okay, um, that, interesting.
Pass, or a civil majority to fail.
Sure, okay. Um, all right, well, that's, uh, actually, it would, is the alderman from the seventh on? Is, is he available for a question?
We can check all of them from the seventh. Will you yield to a question from the all the one from the eighth? All of them from the seventh? I heard him vote earlier.
Yeah, okay, I, it looks like he's not, um, still on. We've been on here for a while, so I understand if, uh,
Okay.
if folks had to move. So, um, on that note, I mean, I will, I will request as a, as a member of the rules committee that's, uh, that we have a hearing as soon as possible here because I believe that it's, uh, I believe we do need to address quite a few things here, and I'm, I'm still very interested in, um, in having those conversations and, um, I'll follow up with our vice chairwoman from the twenty-sixth as well. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you, all the one. Over for the first, you have your hand raised?
Um, yes, Mr. President, members of the board, before I did this, I did talk to the alderman from the seventh, which he told me he, uh, would support that. So I'm surprised he's not on here now and disappointed. Um, so I have waited all this time. We did not send the rules back. Yes, there's some other things. We sent it back because of that one specific things. We're supposed to pass the rules as soon as possible, and we have not. And I've given you guys more than thirty, sixty, ninety, one twenty. So here's my thing, what I would say, support this, support what's restorative justice. We're coming back up to a new, uh, time, and then let's, I'll sit down with you. I agree it needs to be some stuff that's changed and and put together, but I don't agree I should wait any longer. Um, and so I, I always, um, kinda paused when people said, oh, just wait. Okay, I will, if you will give up your right to vote. But if you don't think that it's all right to give up your right to vote, I just do not want, I want this to be up and down. If you don't do it, that's all right. But, uh, yes, there needs to be things and they can be, uh, addressed. But this is, what is this? Eight, May, June, July, August, September, October, six months later. And you haven't done anything. There was not, nobody stopping you from doing that. So then if you do anything, you guys get punished because all of you, besides the chair calling a rule, uh, meeting, so you know I'm a rules person. You guys could have called a meeting, okay? So if you thought that was so important, you should have done that, and you didn't. So my question is, why didn't you?
You guys, well? Over from the first.
I'm sorry, I did, I, I did that improperly. So I'm sorry, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the board, if the alderman from the eighth would yield. So I was out of order the way I said that.
All right, thank you very much. All the one from the eighth, will you yield to the all of them from the first for questions?
Sure.
So, as I was saying, um, the members of the, uh, rules committee can call a meeting. Any of, uh, committees, the majority of the members write a letter to the chair, and then if the chair doesn't do it, then the vice chair, whatever, you can call a meeting. So, but to bring this up six months later, uh, 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 I am just, I'm not listening to that because you didn't do it. So take your responsibility too. Like I said, I took this to the chair of the committee. So I am very concerned that he's not on here, but it still doesn't, um, stop or prevent the fact that I don't have seniority, and you're telling my whole community, yeah, we, uh, stopped you from voting. We took your, uh, money from, um, war capital. We did all this stuff, but we still want you to wait some more. I want to know if that's what you think should happen if you didn't get your right to vote, and you, you had your war capital. You guys have all been only about having these hearings about war capital, about streets, about refuse, and I've been doing it. I've been, um, we, um, uh, sending subpoenas out because people don't want to show up. Um, you cannot have it both ways. I am a senior alderperson, and I deserve what is rightfully my community's, not even for me. But you cannot have it both ways. It is not a good look for you always to be saying, well, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Well, what about this? Because as I said, why didn't you all just call the meeting? I, I agree that the, the chair should have had these meetings, but at some point you guys should have done it, and that's my question to you.
I'm, okay, so I, I don't, I don't entirely know, uh, the question. I, I can only speak for myself here. Um, there's, there's seven other, uh, members of the committee here. Um, you know, we, it, it does look like the alderman from the seventh is back on, um, as well, if that's, uh, I, I'm happy to answer, you know, there's been a lot of things going on. We've all been in tumultuous situations here at the Board of Aldermen. We've been trying to find our way um, in the situation that the malfeasance of our previous members left us in. Um, you know, but that's, that's kind of neither here nor there about the rules. So it takes, you know, it takes more than just than one of us to call a meeting. So, um, I'd be happy to defer to the alderman from the seventh.
No, no, but you were putting it off on him like he didn't do it. What I'm saying is, then, since you're on the rules committee, then it was your responsibility to look up the rules, because when I was the chair of the rules committee, I would teach the people, the people who own my committee, I would teach them, or they could get their own book and get in there. So I can't just blame, oh, how come Alderman from the seventh didn't do it? Because you also didn't do it, okay? And you all didn't, you should have gotten together and had a meeting if it was important to you. Um, and so after thirty, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty, whatever days, that's way past the thirty days that we can take something out of committee. And so I, I can't put that just on him. And so when I mess up, I also take my own responsibilities, is what I'm saying to you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so any further discussion? All over the first?
Um, I, I just waiting, Alderman from the seventh had his hands. I have a lot of other questions for.
Okay, making sure you're, you're, you're done. All right, all of the second, uh, seventh, pardon me. You have your hand up. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Apologies, I didn't know we were, we're gonna keep going today. Um, you know, I'll defer to the older woman of the first. I'm, I'm happy to support a motion to pull the rules out of committee, if, if that's what she's inclined to do, or I'm, I'm also happy to have a rules committee meeting next week, um, if we want to discuss changes to the rules. Um, either is fine by me. That's all I've got. No questions.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, your hand is raised.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just given the fact that the alderman from the seventh, uh, is saying that he'll have a, a meeting, a rules meeting, I think it makes sense to do it there because if I'm not mistaken, i- i- if we were to, uh, to pass this, then any other rules that we would be addressing would take a two-thirds majority. Um, if I, if I recall correctly, so it may make more sense to, uh, either come out with a slate of, of the rules, uh, that we've been discussing, or to address, uh, uh, the alderwoman from the first's, uh, issue, uh, in committee and make sure that we have that everything makes sense so that when we amend these rules, we don't have to double back and, uh, have two thirds because it's always. because it's always tricky to get two-thirds of us on board with various things, uh, that's just my thoughts on it, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-third, you had your hand up first, you're recognized.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see the problem in just voting on this, because again, if, if it's gonna be tied to a whole bunch of other things, um, you know, it, it does make it more where we can't argue against one thing versus another. This is, this is pretty plain, uh, you know, especially, you know, coming up next year, some of us may run, some may not, some may not win, some might choose to run again in two years. You wouldn't wanna come back as a junior alderperson, you would want your service that you've been, all, you know, all your time to kind of count, you know, not come back and be at the very bottom of seniority, at the very bottom. I, I understand that, you know, um, and, 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 you know, the Alderman from the first has been pretty clear about this feeling that, uh, it was unjust what was done, I don't know, you know, we, we can agree or disagree, but, um, I, I have no issue voting this out today, voting this. Uh, and again, this very issue, because keep in mind, some of the wards are only two years, and, you know, a year from now, some might be campaigning for their old job back, you never know. So, I mean, I get it, and, and certainly I would wanna come back with my seniority, I wouldn't wanna come back at the bottom of the pile. So that, that's just my thing, I have no problem, uh, pulling this out of committee, and I also have no problem voting to change the rules, to take out the contiguous, and put in the uh, word years, you know, that, that, so if you, if you get the years on, you got the knowledge, and even though me and the Alderman from the first ward have fight a little bit, maybe even a lot of times, I will say that there's, uh, been times that I've won, but there's more times that she's won, and she presents a good argument. So her knowledge has been kind of a good thing, I, I, I have no issue with this. Um, so, you know, uh, you know, I, I, I would almost be tempted to call the question, but I won't. But, uh, anyway, that, that's my whole speech.
Alright, thank you very much, Alderman. Alderman from the nineteenth, you are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, first of all, uh, I appreciate that the Alderwoman from the first, uh, has brought us back to an item that we should have fit, closed out already for this session, so as we are closing this out, this will be the business completed for this session. And I respect the fact that we are about to have new, uh, administrative leadership, and all those other things that people wanna talk about should be done for that next coming session with the new leadership that's coming in place, uh, you need to work with that. But this is just closing out this session, it's an item that we didn't do, and, uh, this particular, uh, one vote that we could take today, and it's done, uh, and as we move forward for the future, uh, we'll look at all the other many things that need to be considered, uh, in that Rules Committee, and this would not be the time to do that, I just think that we need to respect, uh, where we are, close out the business of the session, and be done, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Uh, President, I just wanted to kinda confirm what the twenty-third and nineteenth said, and so I guess what's so, uh, heartening to me is, Alderman Tyus has been talking about, it's been longer than six months, it's been much longer than six months, and so again, here we go, we have to wait, because people say they not ready, and so I just don't think it's fair to her, she has been very diplomatic about the whole situation, she has been patient, and more than patience, and so I, I'm a, yes, and I think we need to vote this out, and, and as Alderman Davis said, look at the new business, because we have more than enough issues that the Rules Committee is gonna have to deal with, and so we don't have to worry about this, cuz this is due in this session, thank you.
Alright, Alderman from the thirteenth, you are recognized.
Thank you so much, with the Alderman from the first, yield for question?
Alderman from the first, we yield two questions from the Alderman from the thirteen.
I will.
Thank you, uh, thank you, I, I, um, I'm new, so I'm not sure what the answer is here, but if the seniority changed, and you became the most senior alder, uh, person, would then you be asking to redo all of the committee chairmanship?
No, I saw, I like streets, I like the things we're doing on streets, I could have moved and been Ways and Means Chair anyway. I think that I've known a lot about streets, and I've been able to help and direct us, and get people's things done, so, no. And I've talked to the other chairs before me, so I have more seniority than Alderman from the twenty-seventh, but I didn't take Ways and Means, I stayed on streets, I think it's a more work that we can do.
Okay, yeah, okay, so the Alderman from the nineteenth's point, it's, uh, change things, and if all the committee chairs change, and it just kinda, that kinda would not be in my mind keeping things going steady for the rest of the session, okay?
Oh, well, can I add something else? I also don't wanna change my office, I don't wanna, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, these are not things I'm asking for. Um, I do have a, a kinda compromise, cuz I am that root nerdy rules person, okay? So I can kinda give you guys a compromise.
What's that?
Okay, so voted out of committee, I'll do my amendment, then I can put it on informal com- um, calendar, if that's what you want, and you got one week to have a meeting, and if you got all these things, then you bring your amendments, and we can do it. Then you only have to have fifteen votes, but you need to have it done, don't ask me to do it, but it's out here, you got a week to do it, if you don't do it, then that's on you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I, I'm sure people who have rules changes they'd like to make, probably just, just heard you loud and clear, um, I, I appreciate.
If they had talked to me, you know, if you called me, and I can do something, I try to help.
Yes, I, I do appreciate that, uh, I appreciate that you take my calls, um, I, uh, don't want that to change. On the, yeah, we got a lot going on on streets, um, yeah, I appreciate that, I'd really like to see a committee meeting, um, before we make any changes, I am disappointed that we haven't had a committee meeting yet. I think we, you're right, a hundred percent, you're right, that we should have had a committee meeting, um, so, yeah, I, I'm still on the boat where I'd like to see a committee meeting before changes at this time, uh, although I, I, I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote yet, right now.
Okay, well, here's what I wanna say again, so it's easy when you're at the end of the chain to cut, to, uh, to kinda complain about what the chair didn't do, and it's not done that, and whatever, when you got a lot of other things going on, it's hard, um, when I got to be the Chair of Rules, they had, I started having rules every week, and people hated that, and we had them twice in a week, and Alderman Green, Alderman Howard, Alderman, uh, from the eighteenth, uh, Evans, we were on, and some other people, but we actually read all those, uh, board bills, and we actually made, we made a lot of changes, and we made a lot, there were a lot of errors in, um, board bills. And we actually had Dale Russet and Mr. Wilson come over, and we got them to show, we showed them all the errors they were making, and they were like, we didn't know we were doing all of that, um, but people complained about, oh, it's slowing our bills down so much, so then they made it, so you couldn't have two meetings, so everybody has this great idea, but they don't know really how much we were saving them, because after me, some people didn't check right, and we had to bring board bills back and reintroduce them. So, uh, again, if you're a member of a committee, I'm gonna say, don't just attack the chair, oh, you, I'm disappointed what they didn't do. Part of your responsibility is to go to the chair and say, hey, we haven't had a meeting, how about we do this? And you're new, so I'm not, I'm gonna give you that and say it, but there are other people that not, uh, uh, that are not quite as new, and so I'm not attacking the Alderman from the seventh, I still went to him, uh, yesterday at the Streets Mini Meeting, when Nancy Cross talked about us having a meeting, she left out the Alderman from the ninth. I said, no, he's the Chair of Forestry, Parks, Recreation and Forests, so he should be put in. So that was my responsibility, not to just say, oh, they wanna meet with me, okay? So that's what I'm saying, we all bear responsibility in being our checks and balances, even on our own committees, okay?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I, you know what, I've moved out the seniority, uh, pretty quickly. We got a lot of new people going on.
And you did good today to rec- re- remind the Chair, uh, the President of things, so I'm always proud as a little chickadee about the rules, when I see people using the rules, okay, properly.
I appreciate that, um, yeah, I, I appreciate that, I'd really like to see a Rules Committee meeting on, on this before we're making changes, um,
And did you not hear what, you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand, but you're saying that you'd make your, your change, um, which I. Yep, but, so you wouldn't?
That doesn't change the vote, cuz you, it doesn't change, I'm sorry, I didn't finish the explanation. It wouldn't change the requirement of how many votes you would need, cuz I wouldn't pass it. And there are people who have trusted me before, and they know if I give you my word, I'm not gonna try to pass it or do anything like that, okay? So I'm just saying, that's a compromise.
But, wh- I guess the full compromise would be, well, I don't know, it's sort of like, we, why wouldn't we do all, so you would pull it out of committee, and then wanna put it right on the res- on the informal calendar, or you'd want to pull it out of committee, make the con- the continuous seniority change, and then put it on the informal calendar.
No, that's not how it works, once you pull it out of committee, it's out of committee, okay? I would, uh, then make my motion about the continuous seniority, which is three little words in three different places, which I have my amendment on the Google Drive. I would then put it on the informal calendar, you don't have to pass it, if you don't pass it, if you, then you're saying you wanna have a, a meeting, talk to the Chair of the Rules Committee, ask him to have a meeting, or ask him if he can let his Vice President or whatever. They come, come to the meeting, prepared with all of those things that you think that need to be changed, and I will not do anything to it, and I don't think there's anybody here who, if I told him I wouldn't do something, would tell you I did, I broke my word, okay? So that, that's a compromise, and you would still only need fifteen votes, not twenty.
Right, I guess that's, that's kinda what I meant, that you would make, you would get your amendment passed, and then put it on the informal calendar for committee today, yeah, that's what I meant. Okay, that's my, that's my question, thank you so much, I yield back.
Alright, so Alderman from the nineteenth, you're recognized for a second time.
Uh, Mr. President, I just wanted to reiterate that, uh, respectfully, this is the only item that will be discussed in that committee meeting, uh, and that all other changes that need to be required for the next session, will wait until the new leadership is sworn in, and they have an opportunity to be involved at a different level, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Okay, no hands raised, uh, so I believe the motion before us is to take, the rules out of committee. Uh, do you, uh, Alderman, you need to close on this, Alderman?
I do, because I got it, something in the chat from one of the alderpeople, asking me, what do they do? Um, uh, what was that chat? I wanted to, and respond to them, what's the rule in Missouri State Government, or the federal government? So, the rule in the Missouri State Government doesn't have anything to do with us, but, is it alright? Um, I guess I can explain to them, is that alright, Mr. President?
Uh, yes.
Okay, the rules in the Missouri State Government don't, don't have anything to do with us. We actually used to be a bifurcated system here in the, uh, city, and we had a, a House and a kinda Senate, for lack of better words, until we went to one thing, so when we did go to one organization or one chambers, we then, if you look at the end of our rules, it tells you that if we have something that is, um, a question, that we go to the, the, the United States Congress rules, okay, and the exact language is something about the digest rules or something like that, but they're really, we use Congress, and then if we don't have that, we also use, um, Robert Rules of Order, but first we go to see if there's something in Congress. Changing, um, our rules is not anything that would have anything to do with the federal or the state government. It would be something that would have something to do with us and our rules, okay? And one of the things that has always been interesting to me, when you ta- look at the rules about seniority, that, we didn't always have that, that ca- came about in the eighties, and before that, we just had uh, uh, seniority, in the eighties, when somebody who had left came back, they said, we don't want people who left or who got beat to have their seniority, that, that didn't happen to me, I didn't leave, I didn't get beat. So I thought that was, uh, but I, even that, I thought I had problems with that, because if you leave and you come back, and you still have your knowledge, okay, now I can see if you've been gone for twenty-five years, um, but, um, so that wasn't there, and then they always refer to the Charter, the Charter doesn't talk about continuing seniority, this was something made up, and I know this, because the sponsor of it told me, and was my best friend till he left, that, oh, we did that for some, against somebody else, and then he got caught up in it, and I would always tease him about it, and say, aha, everything, and it was about a woman, again, okay, these things happen to women, they never did it to a man that was down here, so, um, no, it doesn't have anything to do with the federal or the state, uh, Miss- uh, Missouri, or any kinda things like that, so I just wanted to answer that, okay? And, um, I'm going to, um, renew my motion, that, uh, pursuant to rules fifty-eight and seventy-one, we, uh, move Resolution One, um, out of the, uh, of our, I'm sorry, Resolution One, our Board's Rules for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, Legislation from the Engrossment Resolution Rules and Prudential Committee, and adopt them on the floor of the Bo- Board, except for that, I'm not gonna adopt them, I told you, I will put them on the informal, and give you a week to do what you wanna do. And that should be enough, since you guys have had all this time, and if you don't get anything, then let it go and do it next time.
Alright, so you're renewing your motion?
I am.
Alright, so, it has been moved to second that we adopt Resolution Number One. Uh, I'm going to myself request a roll call, so, Sharita, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, um, President Ballmer, are we taking the most, the?
This is a motion to take Resolution, uh, one out of committee?
Okay, to discharge Resolution from the Rules Committee.
That's correct.
Okay, um, Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Igresia? Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Lappy?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Pass.
Alderman Switzer?
No.
Alderman Howard?
Aye, aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Todd?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Please? Alderman Walker? Alderman Bacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con? Alderman Clark Hubbard? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Grass?
Aye.
President Ballmer?
No.
Alderman Igresia?
No.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Keys?
If you say Alderman Bosley again, it's not, I was gonna try to say.
My machine shut me off, so my, uh, answer is aye.
Am I being heard?
Yes, Alderman from the third, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can't, so please.
Oh, yeah, yes, please. All right.
Alderwoman Walker?
Aye. It won't let me back in.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Twenty-three, aye votes and five no votes.
All right, by your vote, we have taken Resolution Number One discharged from the Rules Committee. And Alderman from the first, uh, you have an amendment?
Um, yes, Mr. President, but first I want to say to people, unless you've ever had your vote taken away from you, you cannot know how it feels to be discriminated against in the year two thousand. I don't really need this seniority. You can't take what I know from my head. I needed it because I came back here to restore everything that belongs to my community. Racism, everybody down here ought to be ashamed of what they did in twenty oh one. That's sinful. It's not going away. And I told them, and what's so funny is the current mayor's father would come to me all the time, every time he saw me and say, I told my son that's a mistake. This lady doesn't give up. So that's a mistake. So I wanna thank all of you all who voted yes and all of tho- those who felt it wasn't right. Continuing seniority was something made up to uh stop other people, uh another black woman by the name of Daisy McFaul. So I really appreciate your vote today. I'm not a crybaby all the time, but lately I am, and I just really do appreciate this for the real twentieth ward. There's no disrespect to Carol Spencer, but I appreciate that we had no business violating people's right to vote in that year. That's something that happened to my grandmother, my great grandmother or my great great grandmother who was slaves. How in the world do we have that kind of stuff happening in twenty twenty? So I appreciate your vote and I do have an amendment and then I will put it on the informal calendar. My amendment is getting a Google Drive and it's a pretty simple amendment. It just takes the word continuous seniority. It doesn't take seniority, it takes the word um continuous out of. Let's see here.
Alderman, I believe that I will you have to make a motion in a second for discussion, do we not?
For all that we wanna, I I move to amend, I'm sorry.
That's okay, take your time, take your time.
I move to amend uh the Rules Resolution Number One.
All right, entertain a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by the Alderman from the first and the second by the Alderman from the fourth for Amendment Number One to Resolution Number One. All right, Alderman, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of board, um in your Google Drive, there is a uh a referral to Amendment Number One, and basically it takes out the word continuous from Section One, Rule One, Section Five, Rule Nineteen, and Section Twenty-five, Rule Ninety-six, and it just takes the word continuous and leaves seniority in there.
All right, any discussion? Alderman from the fifteenth, your hand is raised, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would rise in support of this amendment. Um, I have long supported the restoring of the seniority of Alderwoman Tyus. I had planned to vote yes on this the first day of session when I thought that this would be brought up and I I the Alderwoman was sick, if if memory serves me correctly, um and we could not do it that day. I did yes on this for many years, um even, you know, when the Alderwoman was not able to get the the votes to do this. Uh, you know, I do think that it is the right thing to do. Um, I am I am not changing my position from where I have been in the past. Um, and I and I hope that others who, you know, had voted um previously to be on the side of this, continue with those yes votes today. Um, I I do think that this is a long time coming. And for whatever differences those of us may have across the Board of Aldermen, um, I I hope that this can be a uniform moment. It does um address some past wrongs and allows us to move forward in a more cohesive way. Um, i- in in the future. Um, and so I just wanted to to make it known that my position is not changing. It it is the same as it has always been. Um, and I, you know, I am still supporting this today um for the Alderwoman in the first ward.
All right, thank you very much. Alderman from the fifth, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I also rise in support of the amendment before us. And a brief comment, I also offer a virtual hug of support for the Alderwoman from the first for persistently pursuing writing this wrong. And this is from a person who is a freshman Alderman to whom seniority is not a big deal, but it is a big deal to make sure that the rules are properly put in place to protect people's seniority. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I also I echo the sentiments of our colleague from the fifteenth ward. Um, I too have been one that has um, you know, supported this previously um and plan to do so again. I also want to say this is a a good time for us to have this conversation as we move to the reduction of the Board of Aldermen. Um, none of us are going to be in the same ward that we were elected to. So even those of us that are being reelected uh in this upcoming election, um for those that choose to run again. Um, technically, no one going into next session will have continuous seniority and the wards in which they represent. Um, so this is not just, uh, you know, um, justice for uh the Alderwoman for the first ward, but it's also a good policy for us moving forward as well. And I think the Alderwoman from the first ward hit the nail on the head that just because, you know, someone might have left this, uh, you know, venerable institution doesn't mean that the knowledge that they gained during their time here leaves them as well. So um, you know, I rise in support of this, not just for, you know, restoring uh the Alderwoman from the first to, you know, her uh seniority here, but also, um, you know, wanna make it poignant for everyone else uh who might plan to run for reelection. Um, that this is, you know, something that would also affect anyone in that situation as well. Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the eighteenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, uh, all the people. Uh, first of all, let me say that I have supported the Alderwoman Tyus and from the first ward for more than for the whole twenty-three years that she was denied her her rights. And also, I did, I voted even when uh some people, when she didn't have enough votes to pass it. I think it uh, it's only, I think uh, it's only right that um her seniority be restored. And so I'm, this is a good day as far as I'm concerned cuz I've fought with her for twenty-three years, ever since her war was cut. I spent my whole summer, I was a Democratic Committee man then, and I spent my whole summer uh fighting to try to keep her war from being moved un- unjustly. So I'm so happy for you today, uh, Alderwoman Tyus. This is a great day. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, uh, Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twelfth, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, uh, I just wanna say that I also rise in support of this amendment. Um, and I want to say that I rise in support of this amendment even though I have no stake in it, right? Um, as a freshman Alderman, as someone who will not be returning to the board, uh, which I will point out that the Alderwoman of the first praised and was quite thankful for. Nevertheless, I believe she has presented a compelling argument and a sufficient enough argument for myself that this is indeed a twenty-one-year-old injustice. So to the Alderwoman of the first, I just wanna say that I hope that we are working towards correcting this injustice. And I hope that we, as a board, again, a twenty-one year-old injustice, as the youngest selected official in the city of St. is serving, elected at twenty-seven, currently at twenty-nine. This is an injustice that you have lived with for by far the greater majority of my my short life, my short tenure in life, if you will. Nevertheless, I hope that as we move forward in correcting this wrong, that this board and that the incoming board of fourteen new wards is able to continue addressing wrongs that have been committed by by our legislative branch of government uh here in the city of St. Louis for the past sixty, seventy, eighty, and in some cases even hundred years. And I hope that we're able to to step away from the historic business as usual or the historic culture that has been established by this board as we all rise and unite and the never-ending goal of ameliorating the city of St. Louis. So Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman of the first, I do support this because I do believe you're wrong and I do earnestly hope that this, in my support of it and this correcting this wrong, puts us, yourself and myself, on the track of rebuilding of colleagueship that I very deeply enjoyed and have absolutely regretted um has been damaged. So thank you for pursuing this. I mean, the twenty-one years of pursuit, that is worthy of an award in and of itself and once more reiterating my support, Mr. President, I respectfully yield back.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is actually one of the first issues that uh that I realized that you could really uh step in it. And when I got down to uh the caucus uh the first time, there were some pretty strong feelings uh both ways on this when I when I first got elected. Uh, I had a discussion with the Alderwoman from the first and I've been uh on on her team with this, uh, you know, basically since that day. Um, the the, but I also am a a stickler for procedure. Uh, and I remain unsure that this is the correct way to do this, but I I do respect that the Alderwoman from the first is I'll say, meeting me halfway uh with the compromise uh to put this on the informal. And for for that reason, I I'm uh going to be supportive of this today because I both supported in theory and uh don't wanna let uh being a stickler for procedure uh get in the way of something that I think is the right thing to do. Uh, just because I'm not sure that we're doing it the right way, especially since she has uh indicated a willingness to 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 meet the procedure nerds halfway on it.
I'm a procedure nerd.
So so I I thank you for that, Alderwoman, uh, and I will be supportive of this and uh with that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the seventeenth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to say to Alderwoman Tyus, um, I I support this and you have just so much experience with rules and everything else um that I feel, you know, we should be getting your seniority back. And I appreciate and value you in terms of your experience and the knowledge that you impart to others um in terms of making sure that we follow the rules correctly and everything else. So um, I'm I'm happy for this day. I'm very happy for you on this day. Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the nineteenth, you had your hand up, it went down, or you?
And you know what? All I wanted to say was, this is a good day and uh giving a compromise for waiting a week just for people to do their due diligence to make sure they're okay with procedures. Um, that's a good thing too, but I don't have anything else, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no other further discussion, no hands are raised. All right, Alderman from the first, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, members of board, first I'd like to say to people, I know people think this is all, when they say, get your seniority back. I really do represent a community. This is my community seniority. Okay, and um I I wanna thank uh Alderwoman Green and congratulate her. She's gonna be the new board president because she was always with me. So congratulations and thank you. And I say to Alderman Stevens, I didn't kill your bill. Um, so I left it open. I just was teaching you a lesson, okay? About I really was really, really sick and I thought that was insensitive, but I did not kill you, Bill. On on purpose, I could have done something differently, okay? So now we have a time to to have a conversation. And I wanna thank all of you all who um voted uh for this, uh, who's uh voted to bring the the bill, I'm sorry, the resolution out of committee. And then I'm gonna renew my motion that you uh vote to pass this amendment um so that that will get rid of this continuing seniority um for someone that a whole area of town um that uh couldn't get it after you um took our vote away and wouldn't let us and wouldn't let me run for office. So I appreciate um, none of you have had to go through that. I wanna say, I hope we don't do this again to anybody else. I don't wish it on anybody else, you know, um, I'm I'm glad my grandmother is not alive. When this happened, my husband's grandparents and parents, you split our ward up in so many ways and you put them all in these wards that had a lot of problems. And when I came back here, it's been nine years ago now. I had to really work on my old ward cuz I do have it mostly back. I got ninety-nine percent of it back now. I'm getting my seniority. I'm working on my money cuz there's some money that goes with that. But I also will work equally hard on your money. If you guys come to my meetings, I don't um just talk about what I can have. I talk about to make sure the Aldermen, the members of the board are respected, okay? And that that has to come from the executive branch. You can't disrespect the legislative body. I am a nerd. I wanna say to the Alderman from the twenty-fourth about rules and things. That's why I do know that there is always a compromise, the way you do stuff in which you do it and um you still don't, you got a week. If you're not really gonna do it in a week, then we can't just keep pushing stuff back. So now you got a chance. And you don't, by me not passing it, you don't need twenty votes. So I appreciate I want everybody to be a rules nerd. I like that. You know that about me. And you do know that if I give you my word, that's what I do, okay? So with that, I renew my motion that we uh amend uh Resolution Number One. As I presented to remove the word continuous.
All right, we have a motion in a second to amend the Resolution Number One. All of the favorites, by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, both? Eyes have it, motion carries. All right. Announcements. Oh, your hand is raised, Alderman from the first, yes?
Yes, cuz I need to put Resolution Number One on the informal calendar.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right. Line item twenty-three announcements.
Tuesday, November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Neighborhood Development will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Wednesday, November the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, Streets will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Health and Human Services will have a meeting at twelve PM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meeting at one PM via webinar. Thursday, November seventeen, twenty twenty-two, HUSS will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. And Friday, November eighteen, twenty twenty-two, Four Board Meeting, ten AM via webinar. That's extended the announcements.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Okay, probably most of the things have occurred during the meeting that you were going. All right. Oh, Alderman from the second, Alderman from the second, you haven't talked enough. You have a little more.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, if the schedule permits, I would like to call a Public Utilities meeting for Tuesday um at eleven AM.
All right, Sharita, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you are recognized.
I would just like to give a shout out to all of our veterans for their service to our country. Uh, we're celebrating Veterans Day tomorrow and uh many of us, I know we only have one member of the board that has served in the military, but many of us have parents, grandparents, brothers, sisters, aunts and uncles, uh sisters, brothers uh that have served and and I appreciate their service and I commend them for giving themselves to their country. Um, and I I think that we should honor them tomorrow. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the fourth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. This has nothing to do with the meeting. I just hope you get to get outside today and enjoy the last day of this nice weather that we're going to have, so.
All right.
I miss my time.
All right. Alright, over from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Um, probably should have just done this during a special guest, but just wanted to thank everyone in the city of St. Louis who came out to vote on Tuesday. And there were lots of important things on the ballot. We had great turnout, um, as far as, as far as turnout in the United States of America goes. Um, but thank you to everyone who voted. Thank you for everyone who worked inside on the polls. Thank you for everyone who worked outside of the polls, I'm talking to voters. It, it really takes an entire city to pull this type of thing off and really get us the best results that we can for our citizens. So, thank you so much to everyone, um, and for everyone here at the Board that, that did all of the work that you did at the polls as well. Thank you.
Yeah, in the words of Tom Jefferson, we're not raised, ruled by majority, we're ruled by the majority who participate. So, thank you all who participated. Alright, any other further announcements? Further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. All members are present today at some point in time or another.
Oh, boo!
Alrighty. Before we adjourn, I once again would like to, as I said at the top of me, uh, thank all of you for putting up with me uh, during this, you very, very unique time in the history of the Board. You are all part of history. You'll all be part of a trivia question in about seventy-five years. As when it comes to St. Louis politics, so you'll have something to tell your great grandchildren, children from now on. So, thank you, all of you, and uh, it's been an honor serving as this role. I do cherish coming back to be a ward Alderman and getting my life back, and my wife is the happiest person on earth. So, thank you all again. So, Alderman who twenty-fifth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to just take a point of personal privilege. And also, um, I can see a number of my colleagues uh, doing the same. Um, thanking you for your uh, service during the last several months as we work through this uh, really unprecedented time in the history of our city. And, you know, it hasn't gone without recognition, um, your sacrifice during this time and, and the amount of work that you've put in um, over those months as we uh, kind of move the legislative body forward. So, I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege on my, my part, and um, hopefully on the part of, you know, the whole Board of Aldermen here to thank you for your time as uh, President.
Yeah, I thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And uh, with that, I'll make the motion that we adjourn until November eighteenth at ten AM. Uh, next Friday, November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two at ten AM via webinar pending uh, certification of the election results.
Alright, yes, you might have to put up with me next week if they don't get it certified again. So, we'll work on that, and uh, with that, I'll entertain a second.
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 Alright, been moved by Alderman twenty-fifth. It's been seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, and the goose that we adjourned. Say goodbye to the goose, he's going away. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Bye. Be safe, everybody.